Good morning. Welcome to this August 6, 2024, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll and read your message?
Yes. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Desmond Frost, Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is Cablecast Live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and live streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard live for free on 96.5 FM KUBU Radio. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, August 9 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will also manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And as we have an item on the agenda later, that there's nothing more important to our democracy than our elections, I would like to invite our registrar, who I believe is the best registrar in the country, to lead us in the place of allegiance. Thank you. First item, Madam Clerk.
Your first item is public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda. And let me pull up your list. Our first speaker is Marvell Wilson.
And I will repeat what the clerk has already said. We have 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. Anything that goes over the 30 minutes, we will hear later. And each speaker has two minutes. Ms. Wilson.
Good morning. Good morning. Once again, we're here. We're back to advise that we follow the directive of the last panel, who sent us to Dave Devanti, and then from him to Jur Chang, to find that just as Mr. Serna prescribes or describes is that we're facing meager and scarce resources for the challenge that we have for our young people. And also, he used the word "compete." So we must compete within the TOT frame for resources to help our youth. And what we're bringing now is an opportunity for us to look at this a little closer, and hopefully you arrive at the conclusion that some more consideration for this particular issue should be urged or should be pursued. So right now, we're asking if we need to go to someone else, or if there's a way that we could get a forum with this body to talk about this issue. We would like that. Or if it's someone else that we need to talk to, then could you refer us to that so that we can have a conversation about how to remedy this challenge that we have within our neighborhoods to build communities? And we're asking for 1% of this budget in order to do that for not just us, but for not just Hooked on Fishing, but for a consortium of nonprofit agencies who do the work in our local areas. I won't say communities, because we don't really have communities right now. We're building communities, but we need the assistance of this body or whomever is in charge of being able to bring this to the forefront. We're looking for that. So we'll have our body here, and people are going to present, and we're going to go forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Serna has punched in, but before I go to Supervisor Serna, I've seen the flyers and the 1%, and I welcome you to go on our website and look at our budget, because, you know, that $8.6 billion, very little of that in comparison is discretionary, and a lot of it's passed through state and federal funding and so forth. So we may want to sharpen our pencils just a bit there. Mr. Serna.
Thank you. So if I wasn't clear last time, or if subsequent conversations with executive staff were not clear, this isn't the time to have the conversation, only because the TOT distribution process does not begin in earnest until the beginning of, basically, the beginning of next year, calendar year. So we've already passed in 2024 all the decisions that are going to be made about TOT. So you're certainly welcome to come to each and every board meeting and distribute what you want to distribute, but in the interest of making sure that you know your time is effective and is in kind of the right context time-wise, please meet with some of our staff, one of our staff, someone will raise their hand, to give you the schedule, because that's what you need right now, is the schedule. Right now, we're not going to be making decisions going forward about TOT. Probably not until, what, next March? Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that you're not expecting that this board's going to be doing anything relative to what you're interested in tomorrow. It's going to be a few months.
Thank you. Caleb Johnson.
Caleb?
Good morning. My name is Caleb Johnson. I'm a Sacramento resident. I'm here with Hooked on Fishing, Not on Violence. We request that the Sacramento Board of Supervisors, Phil Serna, Patrick Kennedy, Rich Desmond, Sue Frost, Pat, and Pat Hume, write a five-letter signature of support in favor of allocating 1% of the county budget and creating positive alternatives for youth and families who have been affected by lack of resources. We want to thank Officer Marlon Yarber in advance for supplying the rehabilitative resources that the ACA-8 and AB 628 passed on June 27 that will give the youth a real chance of prison diversion. We thank you in advance in your AY vote on this future agenda item and look forward to shaping a better future for Sacramento youth and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb, for coming out. Appreciate it. Miko Yor. Morning.
My name is Miko Yor, and I'm a Sacramento resident with Hooked on Fishing, Not on Violence, and other supporting things like that. We request that the Sacramento Board of Supervisors, Serna, Kennedy, Desmond, Frost, and Hume, write a five-letter signature of support in favor of allocating 1% of the county budget and creating positive alternatives for youth and families who have been affected by lack of resources. We want to thank Officer Marlon Yarber in advance for supplying the rehabilitative resources that the ACA-8 and AB 628 passed on June 27 that will give the youth a real chance of prison diversion. We thank you in advance in your AY vote on this future agenda item and look forward to shaping a better future for Sacramento youth and their families.
Thank you, Miko. Michelle Belton. Michelle, are you here?
Not here.
Okay. You're going the wrong direction there, Michelle.
I'm getting it right. Good morning, Mrs. Serna.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Belton, and I had a script, but I'm off the script. This is coming from the heart. I am a mother, community mom from Sacramento, and my two children, my two sons, have been affected by the lack of resources here in the community. Two sons, drug issues, as well as at-risk being on the streets, gang activity. There are programs that are out here, but they don't have the money to help these children with the needs that they need to have in order to move on. And I'm asking, I know it's next year, but I'm letting you know, Serna, this money is very much needed in all our communities here in Sacramento. You say the kids are our future, but our kids are dying. They're dying. And so we need this money to help our kids with trauma, to help them release and unravel the things that they have been going through, to talk to somebody. I am here as a parent and letting you know that these programs exist, but the funding is not available. And right now, today is National Night Out. Do you know what National Night Out is today? That is for everybody, the police and the communities, to be together, right? So can we come together as a community? And as a mom, I'm pleading today, National Night Out, for these funds to go to these programs to help our youth in Sacramento County and stop killing each other. And it takes a village, and I am part of that village. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So again, in the interest of making sure everyone is aware of what this county is doing, has done, intends to do, if you're not familiar or aware of the Black Child Legacy Campaign, I would strongly encourage you to become familiar with what the Black Child Legacy Campaign is. This county, I think, has appropriated somewhere north of $30 million over the last, I don't know, 10 years, as well as the first five commission, again, measured in millions of dollars, to address the disparity in the death rate in the African-American childhood population here in our seven most affected communities in the county. So please, they're easy to find on the web. We have a great working relationship with Sierra Health Foundation. We're doing good work. We're measuring the outcomes, and I think to a person on this board, it is one of the great successes, quite frankly, that this county has enjoyed over the last few years, in my opinion, addressing, just like the speaker just said right now, our number-one issue, which is making sure that regardless of your zip code, or color of your skin, or your history in the community, you have opportunities. So again, just want to make sure that that didn't go unmentioned, because it's critically important.
Thank you, Supervisor, and thank you for your leadership. Jasper Turner.
Supervisor, I've come to merely ask that we finally take a good look at what's been going on for the last 10 years. I'm a transfer from San Francisco, retired probation officer from the juvenile system in San Francisco. Let us finally put an end to this scourge that we have here in the city. This 1% is important. It is important for this entire community, not just for the kids, but for everyone. So I'm urging that we take a good look, a real good look, at how this money is being dispersed, and to the groups who are actually at their feet on the ground, who are actually doing the work. Which again, I merely ask that you take a good look as you overlook the next couple of gears, or gear, to the dispersion of how this money gets spent. The group Hooked on Fishing, Not on Violence, has its feet on the ground. We are asking for your assistance in continuing the work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Bishop Henry Williams. Good morning, Bishop.
Before you turn the time on, I'm asking you all to be patient with me, because it's a couple of things that I want to say.
Yes, sir.
Before you turn the time on.
Yes, sir.
I'm 89 years old, and I'm an ex-slave from plantation of Florida, okay? None of you all turned me in. I'm an escaped slave, okay? Back in the 1953, okay? And the lead bird, Florida, okay? And we need support here, and the money that they asking for, I want it to be given, okay? Because what I see here, I don't like, because I know there's enough people in politics, black people here, this is reparation, for some of the black people to be on the board here and on the panels and everything, you know what I mean? I don't like what I see. I'm a power attorney general for the state of California, so if anybody here can help write up or see a lawsuit like I do, I'll file it. I'll file a $250 billion lawsuit in the federal court in San Francisco against a railroad company, and I can file one here if I got support. I want you all to know I support this and the money coming down here, but I want a percentage of it for the Hooked on Fishing and Not on Violence, for the money going, some of the money going to them, some of the money going to the Kingdom Warriors, okay? All over the world, 508, okay? We can, we do it everywhere in America, okay? So I really support these young peoples here in Sacramento, so I want you all to do the same thing. You're not black, but I want you to act like you're black. I want you to vote like you're black, okay? That's what I want, okay? Because that might save me a lawsuit against all of y'all, okay? I'm not afraid. I'm honest, I'm a real slave, okay? My great-grandfather was a slave, okay? A real slave. So my daddy was raised by a real slave, and I want you all to just to do the right thing, okay? And I want you to put it in writing, okay? I want to know some names here, and who's in charge here, and some names I want support. I want you to support these people out here, Tim and Marvell. I want you all to send them some letters and things, what you're going to do and what you're trying to do, okay? I thank you. God bless you. Ayew.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you for being here. And next is, just because I've never said this before, is Mr. Quick. Welcome.
Thank you. My full name is Ayekwe, go by Quick Time. I'm a community ambassador.
You want to move the other microphone closer? If you speak between the two, we'll pick you up. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Community ambassador, youth and family advocate, senior advocate. I work with seniors and youth. I work in the schools, and I work in the Bay Area, and they brought me here to represent the youth and just community in general, and I'm hearing that there is not a focus on the youth. I want to say that the beginning letters is Y-O-U. The youth is the foundation of our world. If we aren't paying attention to what is necessary and what is needed in our community, we're speaking about the violence, we're speaking about different things going on on the ground levels, it's because there isn't enough attention. I call it the pH balance, just as we have pH balance in our bodies, it's the same in our cities. We have to think about the nutrients. The nutrients are the different programs, the organizations, the food. There needs to be marketplaces for the good food, the right food. There needs to be activities, and then supporting the well-being mentally, the billboards and the art contract with artists and different artists, musicians. You're having different events. You're having things that are paying close attention to the well-being of the mental health, the physical health, and the body as a whole. And we need to have more town halls where you're engaging the people, and you're listening to what they're saying is happening, going through whatever the hustle and bustle, whatever the everyday lives is causing, whatever stress is and things needing to be fixed, refurbished, resourced, paid for, all these things is where you'll find in the town halls. We need to just really think about us working together as one community, one city. Thank you for your time. Peace.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming down. Paul DeHall?
Paul from DeHall.
And I might just give you an extra 30 seconds because of the shirt you're wearing.
Yes, I come all the way from Filet-O, but I'm a retired longshoreman. Worked on the ports down here in Sacramento also, from LA, Stockton, all over. Okay, down here to support the youth as well. Let's open the doors, men and women. Let's open the doors. Hey, listen, these young men, there's going to be more to come. They come down here for a reason. They could be doing anything somewhere else, but they're here today because we need more. We need more. We need more organizations. Let's open the doors, you know, for our youth, for our kids, all of our kids, and the funds. Where is the money? I mean, who's sitting on it? And why Gavin Newsom not ever, never at none of these meetings, never present? I don't get it. Why not? Ain't he representing California? What's going on? Come on, let's stop being in the dark. You know what I mean? Let's stop being in the dark. You know, let's get back and email and send out letters and, you know what I mean, to these different organizations and nonprofit organizations, you know what I mean? Let's, come on now, I mean, where's the funds going? I'm, I listen, you know, I pay taxes. I don't work all on the army base, feeding soldiers, you know what I mean? Okay, yes, fed soldiers, MRE lunches, everything. You know, I'm just here to speak for the youth, because these are our people, these are our children. Takes a village. Takes a village. All nationalities takes a village, you know what I mean? So we're standing here today. We would need some help. We would like for you guys to open your doors and get back with us.
Thank you, Paul. While Sandy's coming up, I'm going to just editorialize here for a moment. I just want to make sure that the public is aware of the Board of Supervisors' commitment to youth. And I mean, we have a youth mental health board, which I believe is one of the few in the nation. Of course, our youth commission's very engaged in what we do and informs us on, you know, their feelings when we go forward. As Supervisor Serna talked about, and his leadership in the Black Child Legacy Campaign is dedicated toward youth and that population, which is needed so badly. Our family resource centers that we continue to fund serve the youth of our community, even other agencies, sister agencies that we all sit on, like the Sacramento Employment and Training Agency, which serves the youth throughout Sacramento County, particularly low-income youth and those communities of color. And then our TOT funds, if you look at what historically we have funded over the past, many of those programs have been dedicated toward youth programs. So I just don't want to let it out there, that the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is not always looking at how we can better serve our youth, but I want to thank you for being here. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for those words. I couldn't agree with you more. I would add to that, the Birth and Beyond programming that is offered at each of the nine family resource centers is also a glowing example of our commitment to making sure that not just youth, but families that have young children survive and thrive here in Sacramento County. Before people start leaving the chambers, because as was mentioned, it is National Night Out tonight, I'm going to personally invite those that are interested to come join us at Jack Davis Park this evening at 5:30. There's, as you probably are well aware, a number of National Night Out events and locations scattered across the country. But over the last, I think, 11 years now, we've hosted a dedicated community event for National Night Out at Jack Davis Park, located in the South Oak Park community, and there you will find a number of county agencies represented. You'll find CBOs and nonprofits represented. It's a great place to kind of find a lot of different information that I think is very helpful. And of course, the inception of National Night Out was intended to bring law enforcement and communities together, and certainly our Sheriff's Department, Probation Department will be all represented, but it certainly has become much more than that. I think we can all agree that it's something we all look forward to. But again, if you just Google "Jack Davis Park," you'll find out the location at 5:30 tonight. It's going to be a couple hours, and I hope to see you there.
Thank you, Supervisor. Sandy.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Sandy, and I am one of We the People, and would like to thank you again for being servants of the people. Every day, we hear news anchors, politicians, members of community referring to our political system of government as being a democracy, when we are in fact a constitutional republic. This morning, I would like to read you some insightful comments regarding the difference between a democracy and a republic that were given by Ain Rand, a Russian-born American author and philosopher that moved here in 1926. A democracy in the political meaning of the word is a country governed by unlimited majority rule, where the majority has the right to vote on anything and to pass any laws they see fit, where the standard of legality is being a majority vote, that is, a counting of numbers. Democracy is incompatible with the Constitution, because the principle there is that the sole standard of right or wrong in politics is the counting of noses. The best example of that system are the original city-states of Greece, where the majority had the right to vote a death sentence for a man if they disapproved of his ideas. Socrates is the best example of what is wrong with this system. Socrates was condemned to death because the majority of the citizens found that his ideas were subversive to the use of Athens, but he refused to escape. Though he had the chance, he declared that his fellow citizens were wrong in their decision, but they had the right to vote away his life. A republic as a political system of government is one in which it is limited by the individual rights of men, which means that the majority may vote, but only in a strictly limited and defined political sphere, and that the individual rights of men are not subject to majority vote nor to government legislation. All the government can and should do in regard to rights is protect them. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Sandy. Debbie is next.
Hey, good morning, Board. Before you start my time, I wanted to say-
I started the time.
Okay. I just wanted to say, I know that we have an $8 billion-plus budget, and I know that 35% of it goes to services and mental health, and that I'm really proud of. So just wanted to thank you for being here for our community. And also, I have an invitation. I wanna invite each and every one of you, Pat, Phil, Patrick, Rich, and Sue, to our second annual Constitution Day. Every year, it's a national holiday to have the Constitution celebrated all across the country. And here in Sacramento, we're gonna be having bounce houses and music and speakers, and it's gonna be from noon until 4:00 in Folsom, right by the zoo and the public library. And I just wanted to invite you and the entire county to come out. It's free of charge, and we'll be learning about the Constitution and why we have one and why it's so important that we read it. And we're now dedicated to reading all 51 constitutions because we're finding that in the 50 state constitutions are embedded the Declaration of Rights for all the individual citizens for our country. And it's a beautiful thing. We love our country, and thank you so much for allowing us the time to come and invite you to our event. Thank you.
Thank you. Follow I do the list. Ronald Owens.
On February 22nd, 2019, I woke and felt chest pains. It hurt to breathe. I thought I had indigestion or thought I pulled a muscle. I was gonna take aspirin, but at my age, at 61-years-old, I decided to get myself checked out. After undergoing several tests at Kaiser, I learned that I had blood clots, not in one lung, but in both lungs. I was immediately admitted to the hospital and was treated. I was on blood thinners for several months thereafter. If I took aspirin and went to work that day, I may have died. Fast forward to now, if I take COVID-19 vaccine, I may die. How many have had my pre-existing medical condition and died from blood clots after taking COVID-19 vaccines? As an employee, I repeatedly warned the California Department of Public Health leadership about the dangers of COVID-19 vaccines. They made it about me and not about you and 40 million other Californians. I retired till this information will not be muzzled. On July 23rd, I emailed you a five-page memo, and on July 29th, I emailed a five-page memo to California's 57 other Boards of Supervisors. Those 58 memos urged 296 county supervisors throughout the state to stop offering COVID-19 vaccines. If anyone is injured or dies receiving COVID-19 vaccine after July 23rd from Sacramento County or after July 29th in California's 57 other counties, family could legally claim supervisors failed to perform their duty under Health and Safety Code 101025 and failed to exercise due care to avoid harm to vaccine recipients.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to let Ron know I did receive your letter and read it. It was comprehensive, and I wanna go on record as I support stopping the vaccine, and I hope my colleagues will join me in that effort.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. This supervisor will not be joining you in that. Kenneth Calvin, please.
Good morning to you all. Kenneth Calvin, a representative of New California State. So these three ordinances were passed on July 27th, you'll be able to see them in due time, by Reorganized State of California Ordinance 2401. The State of California insurrection against the United States Constitution. The people of California are suffering from a tyrannical state government which fails to provide a republican form of governance, enables and supports across its southern border the invasion of the United States of America by illegal foreign nationals, and protects vicious criminals who commit outrageous acts of violence upon the citizens of America, all caused by a government of and for a monoparty system led by a tyrannical dictator who openly defies federal law. California's monoparty political machine, its socialist governor, along with the communist state legislators, socialist elected officials, agencies, and unelected regional governance boards are colluding to create a communist California state in direct violation of both Article 4, Section 4, and Article 6 of the United States Constitution. The State of California is moving at breakneck speed toward the ultimate communist state. The California 1850 Compact Constitution was legislatively replaced in 1879 by a progressive constitution. After over 155 years of hard work to destroy all vestiges of the United States Constitution by using the 1879 Constitution and through court decisions, over 920 amendments to the California Constitution, massive taxes, strangulating regulations, regionalism, deliberate destruction of the United States premier education, and economic systems, along with the raping of one of the planet's finest environmental zones, the stage is now being set for the final nails into California's totalitarian coffin. Since the mid-1990s, California has been a monoparty system.
Thank you. Tammy Beckman.
Thank you. I'm just gonna continue from where he was. Over the years, the noose around the state's republican form of government has been tightened with bogus constitutional amendments that include redistricting, congressional and state seats, and resorting to a political party-killing Amendment Proposition 14 that allows the two top vote-getting candidates from the state's primaries to move on to the general elections regardless of party affiliation. Worse yet, the passage of the 2010 Proposition 14, criminal cartels have taken control of the porous southern border of California, and they've established operations to traffic human slaves and to distribute massive amounts of fentanyl that kills thousands of Americans each year. This operation run by the cartel networks works in conjunction with governmental-financed non-governmental agencies and has taken control of California's political machine. In 2020, the California Attorney General's Office proposed an amendment to the California State Constitution to replace the bicameral Assembly and Senate with a unicameral, nonpartisan legislator and to increase the number of members serving in the legislator. That was considered for the November ballot. If the unicameral, nonpartisan legislator proposed had passed, the loss of a representative form of government and the formation of a totalitarian state government would have been completed. The pattern and timing of these events are by design. They will doom the state of California and the citizens of the United States who live within its border into tyranny, patterned after the communist Chinese Maoist takeover of China following World War II. Whereas California has a porous border with sections of inadequate fencing on the southern border as well as access from the Pacific Ocean onto miles and miles of unguarded beaches, it is known that thousands of unidentified foreign nationals referred to as Godaways-
Please, please, please wrap up.
Yes.
Thank you.
... monthly violating federal immigration laws.
Thank you. Perry Ferrucci?
Good morning. Whereas the porous borders of California allow untold numbers of illegal foreign nationals to enter California trafficking humans for labor and sex trade with no plan to remedy to secure the border and violating federal law 22 U.S.C. Section 7102 and California Penal Code Section 2236.1. And whereas the porous borders of California allow untold numbers of illegal foreign nationals to enter California trafficking dangerous, life-threatening drugs, including fentanyl, which is killing citizens with no plan to remedy to secure the border. And whereas the true purpose of all government is to promote the welfare and provide for the protection and security of the governed, and when any form of organization of government proves inadequate for or subversive for that purpose, it is the right, it is the duty of the people to alter and abolish it. Whereas the Constitution's first three words, "We the people," affirm that the government of the United States exists by the consent of the people to serve its citizens. The governor of California, the current socialist governor, and monoparty system along with local officials are following a coordinated design with the intent of actively engaging in acts of insurrection against the United States Constitution. And whereas the existing state of California government thus called has not only abused the powers nominally entrusted to it, but with the connivance and active aid of the executive has usurped and exercised their powers to the manifest injury of the people, which if permitted will inevitably subject them to deputism and tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sarah Mattson?
Thank you. I will continue. Be it resolved, acting on behalf of all citizens of California, the reorganized state of California will establish a restored California government. The reorganized California government will consist of an executive branch, judicial branch, and a bicameral legislative branch of government. Be it further resolved, the reorganized state of California shall honor the Constitution of the United States of America as the supreme law of the land and shall honor Articles 4, 5, and 6 that embody the concepts of federalism, describe the rights and responsibilities of state governments and the states in relationship to the federal government. Therefore, be it resolved, the reorganized state of California shall ensure law enforcement and the courts prosecute those engaged in modern-day slavery according to federal law 22 U.S.C. Section 7102 and California Penal Code 236.1, thus protect the rights of the people under Article 4, Section 4 of the United States Constitution that guarantees to every state in the Union a republican form of government and to protect each of them against invasion on the application of legislature or the executive, when the legislator cannot be convened against domestic violence in accordance with our compact secured by California Statehood Act of September 9, 1850. Madam Clerk, I do have copies of what we just read. If you would be so kind to disperse. And in closing, I would just like to add, Supervisors, this is your notice and your opportunity. Do not be a party to these acts of insurrection against the United States Constitution, and we the people residing in your county that you represent, you serve us. Supervisors, you can stand with God, follow God's law, stop fraudulent elections, and stop using the voting machines today.
Please wrap, please wrap up.
Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Make the right decision, please.
Thank you. Okay, so I have extended the 30 minutes because we have just a few more speakers, and it just makes sense for meeting efficacy. Let me just say this, though, that I'm coming from just my own personal opinion, is that while I disagree with much of what you have to say today, and regularly on Tuesdays, I wanna, first of all, you know, thank God we live in a country, a state, and a county in which you can come and voice your opinions freely, and I appreciate that. I also wanna say that, again, while I disagree with you, I sincerely appreciate the way in which you present yourself, and you do it in a civil way, and that's much appreciated. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for extending this time, Chair Kennedy, and thank you for the attention that all of you, all the board members, have given to the upcoming Army Corps of Engineer Erosion projects. You know, this project's all about water, dirt, rocks, and trees. Doesn't get more basic than that. But trying to get your arms and brains all around it, the data, the science, the modeling, the options, is incredibly difficult. And this is just one of the many projects on which you have to make important decisions, like we've heard this morning. I don't envy you one bit. Whoever thinks your jobs are easy is crazy. And while we might not agree on what to do, I do respect what all of you are doing for Sacramento. These projects have been in the making for several years, and over the years, there's been advances in science, data collection, and modeling. Let me just adjust that there. As well as new federal and state initiatives and guidelines with which to comply. So I just wanna point out a couple of things. The original general reevaluation report, which this table is from, talks about the performance of the project alternatives. It's Table 326 on page 355. It states neither of the final alternatives is currently able to contain a 1 in 200 annual chance-succedence event with 90% insurance. So all this money and destruction for the Parkway is only gonna gain us about a 12% to 13% increase in insurance. I know the Corps has worked with local organizations to develop the project, but working together with someone doesn't guarantee their full support. National Fisheries and Marine Services, National Park Service, U.S. Department of Commerce, Bureau of Land Management, all have expressed serious concerns, as did the Sierra Club, Ecos, and Save the American River Association. The County of Sacramento Regional Parks Department submitted 51 pages of comments. Their conclusion is that the extensive deficiencies demonstrate that the document is inadequate to meet the legal requirements for public review under NEPA and CEQA, and prior approval, significant new information must be considered. I know you've been saying that Contract 3B will be less destructive than campus commons area. For the sake of the Parkway, I hope you're right, but from what we've learned and understand, it will take the Parkway generations to recover-
Please wrap up, Mrs. Spalding.
-from a project that increases our flood protection by only about 12 to 13%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spalding. Madam Clerk?
Nancy?
Thank you. Good morning. We thank you because you do a very tough job, often under harsh criticism, but we understand that you all day think about public safety as well, and we appreciate that. Again, I'm here to talk about Contract 3B, the Army Corps of Engineers Erosion Prevention Project. We again asked for help in facilitating meetings with supervisors, staff, and the Corps. Although people have said that the Corps has put a lot of effort into outreach and informing the public, I have to say that is not my experience. Two pieces of information have been provided from the Corps and FEMA. They've recently issued documents for public review. I found their definition in the glossary surprising. Communication is the practice of developing and sharing information with others and is most typically thought of as one-way. I've never heard that type of definition for communication. It's always been two-way. That explains a lot about the Corps outreach, and as disappointing as it is, it seems to be their truth. The Corps is increasing its recognition of the societal and ecological benefits of healthy riparian areas. They now look at vegetation as being advantageous. Performance and risk assessments have shown that the right mix of well-established native vegetation can help reduce soil erodibility, both physically and chemically. Dense, interwoven root systems can physically stabilize riverbanks or slopes. Secretions from roots and organic matter increase soil cohesion. It's true that the Corps has worked on this project for a long time, but some of their analysis and practices are outdated. Advice from a friend when I was a young woman, and it served me well. Before you get married, keep your eyes wide open. Afterwards, you must close them a little. That's the secret for a good marriage. Now, before this project gets approved, I request that you keep your eyes wide open. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll have you know that my wife's eyes have been closed for 35 years.
It's a successful marriage, I'm sure.
Lisa Kirk. Lisa Kirk, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Kirk. I'm actually the Sacramento County Appointee to the Lock Management Association Corporation Board. Don Natoli appointed me before he retired, and I've been on the board for four years now. And his last words to me were, "You have tough skin." So I'm just gonna make some of my recommendations. I'm not sure if I'm gonna continue on with the board, but we're at a crossword here where it is a hybrid board. Part of it's Brown Act, part of it's Davis- We now have residents that don’t want to pay assessments for various reasons, but part because they’re paying assessments to keep the public places open, paying for the toilet paper for the bathroom. And so you can see there’s some kind of contention why they don’t want to pay assessments. This isn’t a straight HOA, nor does the board. We only have two property owners on that board of a 13-board member. So you can see that even the board members are slacking away from—or the property owners are slacking away from—being on this. We need to start looking at what would be a better alternative for this association. Either dissolve the whole association and let county take back some of the common areas. The parking lot’s common, the bathroom’s common. You’re now getting real property tax from that area. And there is a fear of the Davis Sterling Act because they’re not elected on that board, and there’s quite a few small claims lawsuits right now, that it might be decided because Davis Sterling does state that there has to be only property owners on this board. So we may end up with this, depending on these small claims court judgments, that it cannot be a hybrid board anymore. And I know that Pat’s going to work with us, but I just wanted to keep you posted. Thank you, and Lock is a gem.
Thank you very much, and I agree. Okay. That’s a—oh. Lisa Kirk.
No, no, no.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to chime in on the last point that she made, which is I did go down to an LMAC board meeting, and I will be convening a community meeting to talk about the future of Lock and different pathways we can take—excuse me—pathways we can take to address some of those concerns. So it’s not fallen off my radar. We will get down there, and we’ll talk about it, and we’ll find something that works better. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay, that, I believe, ends our public comment for items not on the agenda. Would the Clerk please call the next item?
Okay. For your matters—consent matters two through 25. For item two, you’re introducing an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 3.30, Section 3.30.010 of the Sacramento County Code relating to miscellaneous Department of Finance tax collection fees. You’re waiving full reading and continuing to August 20th for adoption. And then you also have an addendum agenda today, and this is for closed-session labor negotiations.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of the board that has any question? We have several chiming in. Here’s Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question on item number two, and then I just want to make a comment on item number four.
Okay. And I’ve read item number two into the record that’s introducing the ordinance. And on four, this is the Watt Avenue Safe Stay Community Contract.
So for item number two, I’m just curious as to what is a segregation application?
I’m sorry, are we talking about item number two or item number three? The Watt Avenue is item number three, at least on mine notes.
Watt Avenue is item number four. I’m asking a question about item number two, which is the ordinance relating to miscellaneous Department of Finance tax collection fees.
Okay. I have Director Randy here. He can answer that question for you.
Right. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. A segregation is when someone likes to split charges off of their tax bill. And so that could be, in the instance of they’re contesting a charge for a special assessment, and so they want to segregate or split charges off of their bill. That way, they can move forward with contesting those charges without having to pay that with the full bill. If they were to move forward and contest a special assessment, but ultimately they’re found not to have grounds working with that special district to do so, they would still be responsible for taxes and penalties. So we do advise property owners of that. But we charge for the staff time involved because we have to take one bill, make it two bills, and right now in our mainframe system it is a manual process.
Okay. So this is essentially—is that the only instance where segregation occurs is if we’re collecting taxes on behalf of a special district and they believe that they aren’t due—they don’t owe those taxes?
Yes. So a special district has the authority to put their charges on the tax bill, and the property owner, in their process of contesting the charge, chooses to segregate their bill, one bill into two bills, so they can pursue additional remedies with that special district.
And then, following the outcome, if they’re—if it’s upheld or if it’s denied—
Yes.
—do we then consolidate it back down to one bill?
No. Once a bill is segregated, we treat them as separate moving forward. Usually, the intent would be to segregate the bill because you, as the property owner, are choosing not to pay part of that at the same time that you’re paying your other charges that you view as valid.
Okay. And so on all of the proposed increases contained in this item, the reason I pulled that one out is it seems to be the largest by percentage increase. Why is that?
It’s reflecting our staff time. So we took the cost of staff involved in that, and we did an updated time study. And so I’d have to look back more specifically if we determined the amount of time was longer for that charge than it was in the past, but our staff costs have increased.
Okay. And so you cited the mainframe as being one of the reasons for this, that it’s an unwieldy process.
Yes.
Are we looking at making that a more efficient streamlined process?
We have a new tax system that will go live next summer that will be used for our 25, 26 tax bills. We can look at this process specifically. I haven’t spent a lot of time on that nuance of how the mainframe will make it more efficient, but I do expect that it will be more efficient in the new system.
Okay. Hopefully, that involves a rollback, then, maybe. Final question is, give me an idea of order of magnitude. How many of these do we process a year, or how often do they come up?
These are rare. They’re infrequent. I don’t have a volume for you, but it’s unusual that a property owner wants to segregate their bill. It doesn’t happen frequently. And again, because they still would be responsible for penalties and interest, if they were to pay that charge upfront, they would still have the ability to obtain a refund if that charge was found later not to be valid based off their work with the agency that’s levying that charge.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate the insight. And then on item four, this is the Watt Avenue Safe Stay. I just want to be on record that I think what we’re proposing from an infrastructure standpoint, to have individual restrooms plumbed into each of these neighborhoods in the Safe Stay, I certainly support the use. I think we have to figure out a way to create some capacity, but I think we’re building a Cadillac situation here, and it’s, you know, to double the cost of what the purchase of the property was to improve it. We toured a site that San Diego stood up where they’re using ice fishing tents and restrooms on trailers. And while that’s not ideal, it certainly meets the immediate need at a much lower price point. So I just want to be on record. I think we’re proposing to do—spend too much. So that’s it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, too, have some comments on item number four. First, I want to start by just thanking my colleagues Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Frost. We held a community meeting in North Highlands last week. It was the third one. I think we’ve combined to host in North Highlands to talk about this Safe Stay project, which, as everybody knows, is probably going to be—well, it will be, I think, the largest shelter operation north of the Bay Area, somewhere in Northern California. And I’m very—I’m very proud of what we’ve come up with. I do—I do share the concerns of Supervisor Hume about the cost, certainly the delay in this project, but I do think that this is—I think it is important to have a gold standard and also a site that has applications or programs for people who are in different situations, whether it’s they need help, whether—it was a weather respite, or safe parking, or certainly in the Safe Stay cabins. I do think that what we’ve seen on Flora Road, our level of success is dramatically better with this kind of model. Notwithstanding that, I—you know, I have real concerns about—the cost of this, especially because a lot of the people who are going to be served are going to be in Congress Shelter, I think, during weather respite. But I think this has—this has really the potential of being a game changer in Sacramento County. This location that will combine so many services will be able to serve so many people. And just want to thank—really thank staff for their work on this. Thank my colleagues Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Frost. I think we are, as a board, we’re keeping faith with the community that we need to help and support at this site. I think we have that equal obligation to keep faith with the surrounding community to make sure that we don’t lose sight of the importance of focusing our efforts on nearby neighborhoods and communities, just like we do, I think, on Flora Road, and seeing that all of these are a benefit, not only to the people who end up residing there, but also to the surrounding community. So I’m strongly supportive of the project and look forward to more community meetings to come, and look forward to opening this as soon as we possibly can. I know end of 2025 is a long way away, so anything we can do to speed that up would be—would be very helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Frost, do you have a comment on item number four?
Yes. I just—
Okay.
I just wanted to echo Supervisor Desmond’s comments without repeating them, and also say, I think—I know there’s extra cost, but I think the—you know, the foundational—you know, the—there are certain elements in that entire project that not only make it successful for the occupants, but also for the surrounding neighborhoods. And, you know, I appreciate Supervisor Hume’s comments regarding cost because this has been extremely costly, but I think it’s important also to have the proper facilities in place to manage the different groups of people. So I want to thank the staff who came out to North Highlands. We had a pretty good turnout, and everyone seemed very supportive of the project, I thought, and I’m really looking forward to seeing it in action. And hopefully—we can, you know, augment this with, you know, other housing—permanent housing opportunities that will better—and supports that will help transition people out of homelessness. And then I just had one other quick comment on item number 13.
Okay. Item 13, authorize the Director of Regional Parks to execute five contracts to support implementation of the grant-funded Casamnes Ladder Fuel Reduction Project.
So I don’t see Liz Bellis here today, but I wanted to especially do a shout-out. This is a grant that we had been received from Cal Fire. Special thanks to Cal Fire for their support. And I wanted to thank the Ranch of Myriad Fire Safe Council and also the Sacramento Valley Conservancy for their leadership over time and their unflappable persistence in trying to advocate for not only fire but storm safety in the southeast portion. I want to thank Supervisor Hume, who has been very involved in this advocacy as well. And especially thank Liz Bellis and her team for putting it to work and bringing these contracts forward. I feel—I feel like the southeast county is getting safer by the day just because of everything the staff is doing to try to help us, and I—and not just the staff, Congressman Berra and our state legislators, and we’ve had a lot of support. So I just wanted to thank everyone.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Serna?
Thanks, Chair. I’ll be very brief. Going back to item four, I just feel like I would be remiss if I didn’t call out the exceptional leadership from District Three and its supervisor as it relates to the Safe Stay site, and making sure that at the top of our priority list as it relates to that project is making sure it’s a very transparent and open process involving the public, inviting the public to actually help us make it better and shape it. And so I think Supervisor Desmond deserves a hell of a lot of credit for taking this on in his district, but it’s obviously going to serve a wider geography, and I do appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I’m going to pile on to the love fest that is Supervisor Desmond. Yeah, your leadership has been phenomenal in this area, and I sincerely appreciate it. Supervisor Hume, I understand your concerns regarding costs. However, I look at this a little differently. This isn’t a temporary structure. This is something that we’re going to be living with in perpetuity. And so I think that investing in it for the future is actually a wise investment. This isn’t, you know, just a tiny home that’s going to go away. Homelessness is never going to go away. But on top of that, the services that are provided here in the main facility are something that’s going to serve thousands and thousands of people in the future. So I think if you look at it that way, I think it’s a wise investment, as expensive as it is. I agree with you. Thank you very much, Mr. Villanueva.
Thank you, Supervisor. Just thank you for your comments on item number four and also on the item regarding the fuel reduction. Just to remind the board that DGS has asked that we get bids back by September 26, but we’ll be back before your board on October 22. So to additionally—to get the transparency out there and to let your folks know if they have any comments, there’ll be an opportunity for folks to comment on the contract that is awarded on October 22. So thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have anything to say about the District Three Supervisor?
About the love fest of the District Supervisor?
His humility is such a high dog.
Yeah. Yeah. You know I can turn your mic off, right? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on any of the items?
We do not.
Okay. Is there a motion?
No consent said.
Okay. We have a motion by Supervisor Serna, a second by Supervisor Hume. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay. Item 26 is the presentation on election administration in the County of Sacramento.
Welcome.
Hi. Good morning, Chair Kennedy, members of the board. I am Hang Nguyen. I am your registrar of voters, and I think that what is easy for me to do is to stand in front of you and tell you all of the fantastic things that our department has done. But the real people behind the scenes, the ghosts in the background, the quiet architects, these are the people on your screen that deserve all of the acknowledgement for the hard work, dedication, and commitment to administering elections transparently every single time. All day long, I watch them thin up and wind down election cycles, and we are so blessed to have them. So what do we do? We administer all local, state, and federal elections for the County of Sacramento, and that also includes the occasional retirement board election for SCURS. So fun fact, in case you didn’t know that, we support a growing registered voter file of 873 active registered voters. And this number will grow, it will fluctuate, it will change through the course of time, just because it is the nature of voters, right? So in addition to 873,000 registered voters, we support 14 languages. So as you all know, elections are very heavily regulated, both by federal and state laws as well as regulations that come down through the California Secretary of State. There is not a lot of wiggle room that our department has in terms of election administration. And so everything that we do, from the way that we file candidates to the way that we lay out the ballots, the contest order, the ballot headers, the content that is on the actual ballot themselves, that is all very heavily regulated information. The way that we report election results, the way that we tabulate ballots, all of that is going to be prescribed in some form of federal law, state law, or state regulation. So in addition to that, I would like to turn you to this timeline in front of you, in which every single election cycle, we start with this very similar timeline. Every election in Sacramento County in the state of California is built from the ground up every single time. Our cycle starts 113 days before the election, and it ends 28 to 30 days after Election Day. So for anybody following, that gives us about 140 days to get an accurate election out of the gate and certified, where we are able to elect officials into their seats. So today, we are at 91 days outside of the election. This Friday is the close of candidate filing. And what that means is that we are able to use this information to start building our ballots. And all of these dates are prescribed by some form of election code regulation from the California Secretary of State. So we do not— So today, we are at 91 days outside of the election. This Friday is the close of candidate filing. And what that means is that we are able to use this information to start building our ballots. And all of these dates are prescribed by some form of election code regulation from the California Secretary of State. So we do not have a lot of time, and we are reliant on the support system that we have in order to get all of this information correct because mistakes are not a thing that we do. We are accurate. And so as you can see up here, we have a couple of deadlines that we have to meet. At E45, 45 days before the election, we are looking to mail out all of our military and overseas ballots. That is a federal deadline. We do not miss that deadline. It is a Saturday, and if we are unable to kick those ballots out the Friday before, we're in the building making sure that we deliver it to West Sacramento so that it can hit the mail. After that, we button everything up and we make sure that we're ready for early voting, which starts as early as 29 days before Election Day. At that period, we're going to have the ballot drop boxes open throughout the entire county. We're going to have vote-by-mail ballots mailed out to all of the active registered voters within the county, and we're going to start opening early voting locations as early as 11 days before Election Day. Now, as you all know, Election Day is always going to be Election Day. It is going to be the first Tuesday following the first Monday of either November or June, and in presidential primary elections, the law prescribes that primary elections will be in March. Election Day is going to be 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and until Election Day wraps, we are unable to pool election results or have any insider information regarding what cast for who, who cast for what. When you are seeing the results on the website for the first time, that is when we are seeing that as well. After Election Day, as you all know, the work does not stop. We have between 28 and 30 days to certify the election. And what that means is we go through and canvas all of the materials in our building to ensure that we are accurate and every eligible vote is counted. So the next series of slides I'm going to show you is going to be a bunch of maps that are layered on top of each other to give you the scope of what election administration is. This first map is going to represent the individual precincts throughout our entire county, and these precincts, about 1,700 of them, represent the hundreds of individual districts that may occur on any of our ballots. So as we close the candidate filing period and we know exactly which contests are going to be on ballot, we're able to determine ballot types. So if you look at this map right here, all of the individual colors on the map represent a distinct ballot type, which will represent what a voter is eligible to vote on based on where they live. The low number for any election has been 47, and the highest number has been 252. However, this map is going to be representative of the November 2022 election, in which we had 185 unique ballot types, in which we provided language access for. So our team at voter registration and elections created 555 unique styles of ballots and voting materials. So as we finish with ballot typing, we also consolidate our voting precincts together based on their similar ballot type. And this allows us to consolidate down that number that is 1,700 into something that is more manageable, around 600. And this is going to be how we are able to send out walking lists for campaigns for them to know where their constituents reside. It's going to be how we send out information regarding vote-by-mail subscriptions for anybody that is trying to figure out who has already cast their ballot, who has not cast their ballot. It also allows us to report election results in a more manageable manner so that people are able to determine which pocket of voters are reporting and who has already cast their So as we continue the layering effect, in 2017, we, the legislature passed Senate Bill 450. And what that means is it created the Voters' Choice Act. And at that time, this board voted to adopt the Voters' Choice Act for Sacramento County, and it moved us from single-day polling places to a multiple-day service center in which all voters are able to cast their ballot throughout the county at any of the locations that we spin up for the election. The law also requires that we have to have one 11-day vote center location to provide early voting for every 50,000 registered voters. And then in addition to that, we have to have four-day locations that open the Saturday before Election Day based on 10,000 registered voters.
Hank, just so, to be clear, the stars, can you tell us what each star, I mean, the black versus the blue?
So the blue stars are going to be our four-day vote centers, and in all, we, and then the light blue stars or the dark blue stars that kind of look black are going to be our 18-day, or, sorry, our 11-day locations. So in all, we have 18 11-day locations, and the weekend before Election Day, we open an additional 70 locations for a total of 88.
Great.
So we nail that number right on the head with our registered voter count of 873,000.
Thank you.
In addition to that, we also provide ballot box locations. And so the law requires us to have one ballot box location for every 15,000 registered voters. For us, that means that we have to have 58 locations. We exceed that number. We have 60 locations that open 29 days before Election Day. But for anybody that does not want to utilize one of our ballot box locations, they are also able to mail it back to us, postage paid. That is something that we will pay for the voter to ensure that we get their ballot back if they choose to mail it.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. If you could go back to the other map, thanks. Is there anything in state law that's prescriptive that speaks to the distribution or the, you know, the location of the ballot boxes in terms of making sure that they're not, you know, all, whatever, 50 ballot boxes aren't going to be in the same neighborhood type of thing?
Yes, absolutely. So in addition, Senate Bill 450 also prescribes a list of considerations that the county elections official has to take into consideration when we're either selecting a vote center location or a ballot drop box location. And these are going to be things like low vehicle ownership, proximity to public transportation. All of our locations throughout the entire county have to meet ADA guidelines, so all of our facilities are accessible for any member of the public. We also take into consideration whether or not there is a high population within the area that already votes by mail. And we also have considerations to look into college campuses, whether they're going to be the local community colleges or the state colleges. So that is definitely something that we revisit and we take into consideration every single time we cite a location.
And thank you for that. What about feedback that you might get after an election from voters that, or a voter that feels like, you know, the drop box location wasn't as accessible as they had hoped in terms of distance, that type of thing? I assume we, you, get those letters, emails on occasion. Does that kind of also kind of feed the feedback loop, if you will, in terms of the slim discretion you have to kind of as precisely as possible locate the ballot boxes?
Yes, absolutely. We do have some ballot box locations that while they are accessible, they are hard to find because they may be buried within a facility or within a college campus. So a lot of times, if we're unable to find a suitable replacement, we do have teams that go out and do site visits to ensure that there is proper signage and barricades set up to ensure that the voter is able to find the location that they need. We also have worked on creating interactive maps on our website with pictures so that voters are able to pull them up on their mobile devices and help them find the location that they're looking for.
And that includes, because I've seen it here, and I assume it's applicable to other locations, outside wayfinding as well as interior wayfinding, correct?
Yes, absolutely. For locations that are more difficult to find, we do have pink flags that we will put out. Everything for ballot drop boxes are themed to be pink, and we did that intentionally by design because our pink return envelopes are pink. And we had issues in the past where voters were unable to locate the box when it was black, and they were confusing them for either a trash can or a U.S. Postal Box.
Thank you.
Of course. Okay, so this map, to really address what you just mentioned to Supervisor Serna, is this is the distribution of all of the registered voters that we have in Sacramento County. So as you can see, the pattern of our locations for vote centers and ballot drop box locations are going to kind of follow the same pattern throughout. So once we layer all of those maps together, when I say that it takes a heavy lift and a lot of staff to do this, we have 43 permanent staff members for the Department of Voter Registration and Elections. And in terms of just staff, for my department, it is at 37. I have six embedded staff from the Department of Technology that I call my own, and so that's what brings us up to the 47. We bring in 400 support personnel every single election cycle, and we train them up to ensure that they are understanding what we need them to do. In addition to that, we cite, we train, and we deploy 1,100 election officers to support the 88 vote center locations that we have out in the field. We also staff 16 technicians from the Department of Technology, and we partner them up with drivers, and they rove around the county to support all of our vote center locations out in the field. So if there is any technical assistance that is needed, we send an expert to them, and we track their location so that we're able to deploy them as quickly as possible. In addition to that, we have supply vans that we strategically place throughout the entire county. So if there is a vote center location that is low on supplies, if they ran out of pens, if they need more secrecy sleeves, if they need more signage, we are able to deploy all of that as well. We have nine strategically placed ballot transport vans, and these are going to be located throughout the entire county. And this is where our vote center locations and ballot drop box locations report back with their ballots, and then they're escorted by sheriff back to our department. On Election Day, we deploy 120 people out to close 60 ballot drop boxes, and it is a heavy feat and such an incredible lift because in the last year, we have been able to kind of pull from our county resources and our sister departments and really engage with them to send us their employees to help us close these ballot drop boxes. And it has been phenomenal to watch all of these county departments come together to support somebody, something that is so important.
Hank, so, you know, and I'm sure Mr. Serna, our map expert up here, will say, this is the strangest map we've ever seen at the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, and so it was meant to be very busy by design. And so you can see on here that we have our dark blue stars that are going to represent our 11-day vote centers, the light blue stars that will represent our four-day vote centers, our pink squares that are our ballot drop box locations. We have vans out there, we have, that are going to be our supply vans and our ballot transport vans. The little target on there is going to be where we have the location for the staff to report back with their ballots. And then the little flags are going to be the ballot transporters that come back.
Very well done.
Or the ballot box closers.
Well done.
I'm sorry. Okay, so what else have we been doing, right? If you remember, in November of 2022, our County Voter Information Guide was massive. It was a total of 176 million pages for all of the registered voters in the county. So that's about 88 pages duplexed. So we told ourselves after the election that we had to do better. And in all of 2023, we did messaging campaigns to the voters to help get accurate language data so that we are able to send them the information that is most helpful to them in the language that they need. And by doing so, in our Go Greener efforts, we have been able to reduce our county voter information printing by 40 million sheets. That is 4,800 trees. And the scale of it is just massive. And when we have vendors that send us photos of our materials being printed, our team looked at each other and said, we have to do better. We have to reduce this paper waste. And so we are encouraging anybody, everybody, to opt out and receive a paperless copy of this guide. So something that we also did is we recognized that there is a lot of misinformation out in the internet, and we wanted to provide a trusted source of information for voters to be able to verify the things that they're reading. So in 2023, early 2024, we rolled out My Voter Portal, also known as MVP. We like our acronyms. And with MVP, voters are able to verify their registration, they're able to track their ballot status, view their voting history, they're able to make changes to their preferences and view all of their accessible ballot materials, download and mark an accessible vote-by-mail ballot, and they're able to view their paperless county voter information guide. So really, the one-stop shop for all things a voter may need. We also recognized that there was a push behind voter education, and we created the life of the ballot because we felt like our voters needed to know more than just singular steps within the voting process. We needed them to have the comprehensive knowledge regarding the beginning to the end of what happens to a ballot. So on select Wednesdays and Thursdays, we take the public by appointment through our department, and we showcase all of the steps from the time that we receive the ballot back in the House to running it through our industrial mail sorter, to signature comparison, to opening, to processing, to tabulation, to election reporting, and through the canvas. And this was something that was very successful in our 2022 elections as well as our March primary that we just administered. Election security is also at the forefront of our minds, and in your board packets, I provided you with some fact sheets. These fact sheets are also posted on our website at elections county.gov, and it's meant to provide voters with the layered security approach that all county elections departments abide by. We layered this, we wanted to message the layered security because elections are complex. So we secure facilities by making sure that everybody has badge access. We limit access to certain rooms to make sure that only key people need to go in there. We have cameras over all of our balloting processes, and then we secure our technology. Our technology for voting systems is going to be certified by the California Secretary of State. And again, that is going to be just key people, key staff, that is ever going to ever have to touch that voting equipment. We have strict chain of custody rules that we abide by because that is what is regulated by the California Secretary of State. And then we secure processes with procedures, laws, regulations, and then we train people. We swear every single employee in that works for us every election cycle, we give them the oath of allegiance based on what is provided in the California Constitution. And they take this oath very seriously. Everybody is proud to raise their hand and recite after us, and when we forget, sometimes they say, hi, did you remember me? I know that I came in in the middle of the day, but please wear me in because I don't want to do anything before you do. We have a very dedicated staff, and so this is just going to be the very high-level items that I have up here because I don't want to get into so much of the weeds of everything that we do. But we, in California, have a statewide voter registration database, and this statewide voter registration database connects us as a county elections department with the other 57 counties. And all of the transactions that are either being done by another county or by our county is all going to be shared in near real time with the other county elections department. And so if you look at and consider the voter file for a minute and just think of it as a funnel, all of the information is going to come into the top of the funnel. So whether that's going to be from the California Department of Motor Vehicles, if it's coming from the California Secretary of State, it's all going to funnel down, and the only people that is going to be touching a voter file record for the County of Sacramento is going to be the team at voter registration. be the team at voter registration and elections. So with that, it wraps my very brief presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you, Chair. Thank you for a really well-done presentation. This is spot-on, and it just kind of, at least for me, underscores just an immense sense of pride that we have people like you that are as committed as you are, and your team. I'm glad you started with the opening slide with the folks. By the way, I saw front and center Mr. Deimers, my favorite map maker here in Sacramento County. Hope he's watching.
He's certainly watching.
But, you know, I think there's, while this was a brief presentation, I think there's probably some more detail that you could go on and on about in terms of day in the life of a registrar, and what it takes to pull off, what is almost a sacred activity for us, in terms of making sure that elections are carried out with the level of integrity that we all hope for. One thing I didn't hear, and maybe you could speak to a little bit, is the nature of, because this gets, I mean, part of your job, part of our job, is looking through several different layers of geography, right? We have to look at, obviously, the county boundaries, then we look at special districts, we look at cities, and as you noted in one of your slides, it quickly becomes somewhat overwhelming. But when it comes to something like a congressional race, where those districts don't follow necessarily county boundaries, they're, you know, they're going to incorporate and overlap with several different counties in some instances. Here in Sacramento, we have congressional districts that include Yolo County. So maybe you can speak to how you work with your colleagues in other nearby counties to make sure that that particular aspect of elections are carried out with the same level of integrity compared to just kind of Sacramento County-specific races.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the question. We love our neighbors. We have a very tight-knit association of registrars, clerk recorders, and we work very well together. And so for our neighboring counties, whether it be Yolo, or Placer, El Dorado, or San Joaquin, we, depends on where the congressional district is and who the lead county is. And so the lead county for the shared districts, congressional, assembly, special districts, school districts, we will base the shared, the lead county on who has the most voters. And so for, unfortunately for Sacramento County, we are usually the lead county. And so a lot of that coordination is going to be something that we kick off, and we make sure that if there is going to be information that is shared, we have distribution groups to make sure that all of that information is consistently shared across the board. And something that our department has been working on in the last few years is just making sure that our messaging is very consistent. Because when we're consistent, people know exactly what to expect from us and where to go next. And so we do the same thing with our neighboring county registrars. Ryan Rongo, who is the clerk recorder registrar of voters in Placer County, is a really good neighbor, and he will frequently come down and visit our office just to ensure that we are doing well in Sacramento.
Very good, thank you. And then, last question, and you could probably have a separate presentation on it by itself, but what happens in your world after the census is complete? And we have undergone the senile process of remapping, you know, political representation at every level of government?
So luckily for me, I was a part of the redistricting commission that was assembled in 2021, so I was able to work very closely with the redistricting team. But after the maps are adopted, we turn them over to Steve Deimers, and he's able to verify all of the boundaries, and he's able to make sure that it is inputted into our database, all of the changes are made, and he does that for all of the local districts that we administer elections for. So prior to every election cycle, by either 125 days prior or 120 days prior, any, any district that would like to consolidate with our elections has to send us maps. And those maps, as you've seen, are forwarded to our GIS team, and they go through and make sure that no changes are made. So then that way, when you see the map on the first few slides, where it has all of the individual district boundaries on there, that is the work of our hard-working GIS team. They babysit those boundaries, and they make sure that they're right.
Very good, thank you.
Of course.
Supervisor Frost.
Well, first, Hang, I want to thank you for, you and all of your team, for all your hard work, and all that you do to try to ensure that Sacramento County has election integrity. I know we've, you've had me and other, many others, and given us the tour, and it was very impressive, and I appreciated it. I just have three questions. My first question relates to voter registration, and I think it's my understanding that this, it's at the state level, that when someone registers to vote, that those, it's the Secretary of State that vets those registrations to ensure that they're a citizen of the United States. Is that correct?
So, citizenship is going to be something that is done by the California Department of Motor Vehicles, and it's going to be passed through to the California Secretary of State. That is information that is protected by AB 60, so the local county elections officials never see that information.
Okay, so if someone goes into a, like, the city of Citrus Heights, and, because now it's my understanding someone can register on the same day, how do we vet those voters to ensure that they're citizens eligible to vote?
Thank you. So, same-day registration has been a law that has passed in California for some time now. It's called conditional voter registration, and all of the ballots that are conditionally registered after the close of registration, so 15 days before Election Day, is going to be envelope-based. It is going to have the same voter registration form that a voter would fill out, whether they register online at the Secretary of State's website, or if they fill out a voter registration form, and on that form, they're attesting that all of the information that they provide to us is true and correct, which also includes their driver's license number or their last four digits of their social security number. When we have conditional voter registration ballots, those ballots are usually going to be processed last during the canvas period. So after we have verified that the voter hasn't already voted in person, and that they haven't already sent back a vote-by-mail ballot, at that time, will we, will we enter those registrations and count that ballot?
And in order to get a driver's license in California, you don't have to be a citizen, is that correct? So, but it's by their, I'm assuming it's by their driver's license number that they would know their status?
I'm not sure. That's not information that the DMV passes through to us. So when we are looking for registered voters in our database, we are able to share information with the statewide voter registration database, which is Vocal. Vocal also has something called Cal Validator, in which we are able to type in driver's license numbers into the system to verify that there is a valid driver's license number in the Cal Validator database that will match. It doesn't provide us with any additional information. It either shows up that it's a match, or it shows up that it doesn't match. And so for records that we do not receive all the information for, that's how we're able to validate it. The statewide voter registration database is a very organic thing, and always behind the scenes, there is always going to be transactions that are happening. There are match criteria that is always going to be run in the background to see if there is enough valid information, right? If there is anything that seems like it doesn't match, then we pen the voter. We get a message from the statewide voter registration database to put them into a pending status, and at that point, our staff at the Department of Voter Registration and Elections will send out letters to these voters to obtain additional information from them.
So you do the follow-up to verify, you don't verify the voter citizenship, but you do, in the middle of an election, it's left up to you to do that, then, to finalize the vote? Is that correct? Did I understand you correctly?
We, we don't look into citizenship. So what we're looking at is we're verifying against the state database Cal Validator to see if there is a driver's license match in their database.
But you said they didn't have, but you said the driver's license, that database doesn't confirm citizenship. It only confirms if there's a driver's license in that database.
Right, and so depending on the way that the Secretary of State's database is set up, is that they are privy to more information that the local county elections officials are privy to, just pursuant to AB 60, where there's a lot of information that is massed from the local elections officials. So the state will verify that information, and so when we are typing driver's license numbers into this state database, that, that information has already been vetted and verified by the Secretary of State. So for example, if my affidavit of voter registration was missing a driver's license number, and my staff had to key in my driver's license number into Cal Validator, because I have an active valid driver's license number, it will match, right?
Got it, okay.
If they miskeyed the number, and it was one-off, it will not match, but they will not be told why it did not match. It will just say, "No match found."
Okay, but there could be some people who say they're a citizen, but they're not, right? I mean, that's not something you can control, but I'm just saying, there could be people in the system who are, have a driver's license and are not a citizen.
So everything that we have in our database is going to be submitted by voters under penalty of perjury. And, you know, if we have instances in which there are suspected cases of voter fraud, we turn all of that over to the Secretary of State, and from there, they take their tools and they will open an investigation.
Got it, okay. You talked about layering security, and I know it, my understanding is that it's legal to harvest ballots in California. So someone could go, like, to arrest home and say, "I'll be, I'll be the one who, if, do you want me to carry your ballot?" And they could bring a big, huge box and drop it in, and that's legal in California, right?
Yes, there is an authorization that they have to sign at the bottom of their return envelope, saying that they have handed it over, and the person that is collecting the ballots have to return it into our building within three days.
Oh, right, and you have to check those signatures, every one of them.
Verify the signatures for the voter.
And based on their, on the system and the driver's license?
So all of the pink return envelopes are going to be tied to an individual voter record within our database, so we will be able to pull up side-by-side and do a comparison for what is scanned in on the pink return envelope, and compare it directly to what is in their voter registration file, including supporting documentation.
Okay, so the layering of security kind of caught my attention, because it used to be we voted on one day, and then they just told us in one day, but now we get announcements, periodic announcement, like, you'll count vote-by-mail first, and then you'll make an announcement, and it'll, it'll be dropped over a period of a week or two or three. And my question regarding this, it goes to the, I like, I love your idea about layering security, and I wonder if there's a way to better have another layer of security by just not letting people know what the results are until the last, till you announce the results, because you, because potentially, I guess not, because people, you're not releasing anything until after the voting stops.
Yeah, so by law--
So you can't do any better than you're doing.
So by law, we are not allowed to collate all of the ballot, the election results together until the polls close at 8:00 PM on Election Day. And so the first results that we publish will be shortly after the close of the polls, so about 8:15 PM on Election Night, and that will include all of the early voting days from the 88 vote center locations that we've had open for 10 days, and then any vote-by-mail ballot that has been processed and verified so far.
Okay. And then my last question relates to the oath of allegiance, and I don't think this is one for, that, I'm not, don't want to put you on the spot, because I'm not even sure you'll have an answer for me, but I did go into the California Constitution. Is the oath of allegiance that you give the poll workers the same as the oath of allegiance that we take?
So, the oath of allegiance for poll workers is prescribed by election code, so it's a little bit different than the, the one that we prescribe to all of our internal in-house support staff that we have. So that's going to be the 43 permanent staff that we have, in addition to the 400 people that we bring in to support our processes, our ballot transporters, our tech support.
Okay, well, that kind of changes things, but what I would like to, I would like a little bit more, not today, but a little bit more information regarding what is the oath of allegiance, and maybe a copy of the code, and I would also like to understand, because when I went into the California Constitution, the oath of allegiance that I took as a county supervisor was not the, the oath of allegiance in the Constitution is two paragraphs. The one I took was one paragraph, and I want to know, what is the difference, and did we take the full oath of allegiance? I'd like to maybe have county council follow up on that for me.
I'm not prepared to answer today, but I can certainly follow up.
Yeah, no, I don't expect you to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, and I'd start just, thank you so much, Hang. My comments will be brief, and I think it's, it's important to have a discussion about where the state role ends and our local role begins, and what we can and cannot do. I think it's, it's important to have a discussion about some of these processes for verifying whether someone is eligible to vote ultimately, and having a discussion about, you know, access, if, if access at some point impacts electoral integrity. I think those are healthy discussions to have, but I think you made it very clear in your presentation today, what the state mandates and what you are kind of executing those mandates. And I have just such a high level of confidence in you and the work you do and your staff about their dedication, and doing everything you possibly can to ensure the integrity of our elections in Sacramento County. So I very much appreciate that. I mean, I, I think we all know, people have always tried to game the system, but you have processes in place here in Sacramento where they're not going to succeed because of your layered security and your work. And finally, just really appreciate you highlighting your, your staff, your employees, Hang, that is a hallmark of a, of a true leader, and just very much appreciate you and the work you do. So thank you.
Supervisor.
Supervisor Hume. Thank you, Chair. I didn't opine earlier on the District 3 Love Fest, but I just want to say I agree with everything that Supervisor Desmond just said, in bifurcating kind of what we control and what we don't control. And so my line of thinking and questioning here is going to be very much along that same sort of split, if you will. And I just want to say that there are many jobs that I would never do. Many of them were featured on Mike Rowe's television show, but yours is definitely one of them, because I think you take it very seriously. And obviously, the integrity and the processes and what you do, you know, there's so much that, or so little maybe, that you can control relative to a lot of the conspiracy theories and accusations that get flung at you, and I think it's a much different job in today's world than it used to be. So thank you and your team for the work that you're doing, and also want to thank you for the tour that you gave me, so that I could kind of see the processes firsthand. And so at least in my mind, I can get that level of confidence that what we can control, I think we do a really good job at trying to make sure that it's accurate and, and, you know, respecting the process of democracy. But I want to go back to just, in the earlier line of questioning, you kind of seemed that we rely a lot on the Cal voter database to provide us with accurate information. Do we have any control over the validity and accuracy, and maybe purging or cleaning up our voter rolls, or is that entirely done by the state?
So voter file maintenance happens every single day in our department. And so in a given month, we're processing anywhere between 10,000 and 20,000 transactions in the voter file every, every single month. And that means that-- And that means that it's people registering, re-registering, they're canceling their affidavits or registration. And so with that, it means that we're mailing 10,000 to 20,000 letters to voters to either confirm their new registration, confirm their re-registration, or confirm that they no longer want to be our voter. The benefit of having the statewide voter registration database is that when we get notification from the database that a voter has moved, we get near real time notification. So if you were to move across county lines and the Vocal database was able to match your criteria, they will send us a message. And at that point, we will move you into inactive, and we will send you notification to say, we, we received this notification from Placer County or Yolo County. Can you confirm that you have moved? Or you confirmed that your registration has changed, or that you, that you made this change. I, it's not common knowledge, but election mail is not forwardable. We do return service requested by design, because we want election materials to come back home to us, so that we can use those little yellow stickers on the materials to maintain our register, our voter registration database. So if it comes back and there is a forwarding address on file, the state law allows us to send notification to that forwarding address to say, it appears that you've moved either out of county or out of state. Please confirm that you have done so. And if you haven't done so, please contact us so that we can get this fixed for you. And it's a very, like I said, very organic, round the clock thing, our staff, even outside of election cycles, this is what we're working on. We have a dedicated team of registration staff that processes these transactions and these records on the regular. So for anybody that goes into a DMV office and they do a transaction there, that, that transaction from the DMV is going to come back to voter registration and elections, and our team processes it. We make sure that any ballot that is undeliverable is going to come back to us. And again, that's by design, because if you've moved even within the county, we don't want your ballot to be forwarded to your new address. We want to make sure that you're able to update that information, so that we could send you the ballot that you're eligible to vote for, with all of the contests that you're eligible to vote for. And that's really important to us. So regular file maintenance around the clock, all the time.
Thank you so much for answering that. I mean, it's fascinating, one, just how much goes into this, but also that's another level of confidence in the process that I don't think the general public is, is aware. So what, what is the trigger then for that notification? Is that somebody changes their address on their driver's license? I mean, how do we even know that they've changed counties, changed states? And then my next question would be, what if they've passed away?
So if they are changing their, their address, they can either do so by filling a paper form out at any of our, you know, National Voter Registration Act agencies. There's dozens of them, public service counters. And so any of those forms that are filled out is going to return back to our office. If they're at the DMV and they're looking to, you know, pay for their vehicle registration, as they are conducting, completing that transaction, there is going to be a screen that pops up and says, are you a registered voter? If so, would you like to update your information? And if they click yes, then all of the information that they update there will come back down to us. If they go to registeredtovote.ca.gov, which is the Secretary of State's portal for online registrations, all of that information is going to funnel through Vocal to us, so we're able to process all of those changes. So it just depends on how we get the information.
And so what if they've passed away? Or what if you get radio silence on the confirmation letter? Or what if, let's say, they go, you know what, democracy's overrated, forget it, I'm not even bothering anymore, and now there's just this ballot that's floating out there?
So on our official ballot envelopes that we send out, the white carrier envelope, there is a box that we've added in recent elections where it says, if voter is deceased or does not, does not live here anymore, please check this box and return it back to our office. And so those are the type of information that we receive and we're able to use to process and, and maintain our voter file. We also have relatives that will call us and say, you know, so and so passed away. We also receive lists from the State Department of Public Health, the Coroner. We get what we call death lists, and we're able to go through and match criteria based on their name, their birth date, whatever other information this other agency is going to give us. And we will not cancel them out unless we are absolutely sure. The law also requires that if we get notification that somebody has passed away, we have to send confirmation to them to say, we received notification that you're deceased. Can you please confirm that you're deceased? It's heartbreaking, but we do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to chime on for too long here. I mean, I could continue asking questions all day long. But I think the integrity of the voter rolls is critical, because so much, as was alluded to, happens before it ever gets to you. So I trust what you and your team are doing. I don't necessarily trust what the bad actors that live outside your walls may be trying to put their thumb on the scale. And so I think anything we can do that removes the question, the shadow of the doubt, all of those types of things, and just get people's faith and confidence back in our processes, we should really be driving towards that. So thank you for your time, and thank you for, for all those explanations, and thank you to my colleagues for, for your patience.
Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, real quick, great questions from my colleagues. What about when someone turns 18? What proactively, if anything, does the registrar do to remind that new eligible potential voter that they can register?
Fun fact, we do high school mock elections. And we have an outreach team that is very dedicated to going out to all of the high schools in the county. And they do mock elections out there in which any high school student that is over the age of 16, they are able to fill out a registration form. This registration form, because they are not 18 yet, will go into the pending file of our registration database. And if they are going to turn 18 prior to the election date, then we make them active. And then at that point, they are our voter, and they are our voter forever, until they tell us that they don't want to be anymore.
Great. I was completely unaware of that program. That's, that's awesome. Thank you.
We have ballots and envelopes and stickers, all of it.
All right. Well, I just want to say that, you know, as Supervisor Hume pointed out, how different your job is than when I first appeared on the ballot 31 years ago. It, unfortunately, through the toxicity of our politics nationally, you know, has put a target on your back that is so unnecessary, so unwarranted. And, and your staff, and I've never seen a group of people more dedicated to our democratic process and a better staff than we have in this county than what you run. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that acknowledgement. I know that the team watching at voter registration is very pleased to hear that. Thank you.
And kudos on not a single note in front of you.
I'll appear.
Well done.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have one public comment. I'm going to bring them up.
And thank you for the pins, too.
Yeah, those are great. Sandy?
Thank you for taking my comment. Just want to say thanks to all of you for those great questions associated with this election process. Also want to say that, yes, I was very impressed with the presentation. Wow. What can I say? Where'd you go? Yeah, thank you. Does bring a lot of confidence. I did have a question, and it has to do with a sister county, San Joaquin County. Last, I believe it was last year, a former city councilman from San Joaquin County was convicted of a number of crimes, including numerous election fraud crimes, even though, you know, we always say that there's no election crime, but there was an election crime done there, numerous ones. So my question is, is Sacramento County familiar with these crimes? And has Sacramento County looked to see how we could avoid these election-associated crimes here in this county, namely problems that were noted, associated with the Secretary of State online registration process?
Your question was specifically?
Yes. If Sacramento County ROV is familiar with those crimes, and are there processes in place?
I think that we, I think that the, the presentation that was made today was very thorough and went over all of the, the backstops that we have. And yes, we are aware of those crimes, but that's an anomaly. It's, it's not, not the, the normal case of business when it comes to elections. But I think that the presentation that you heard today shows and demonstrates that we have those backstops in place.
Okay. I wasn't quite, I was familiar with one of the specific crimes, and I didn't hear it addressed in the presentation. So if she could answer that, that would be great.
Madam Registrar, would you briefly? And your time is up. You, you can be seated. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. So Sacramento County, along with the California Secretary of State and all of our sister counties, for any address that we have on file that has more than 10 registered voters, we automatically look into it. We have a very talented GIS team that is able to look into the address information and verify whether or not it is a single resident, if it is a multi-generational resident. And at that point, based on the findings of our GIS team and investigations there, our registration team will send out notices to the people at that residence, just to confirm that they are still living there.
Thank you very much. And I will say that I recall in Rancho Cordova, we had a circumstance in which the voter registrar's office identified it, and it was sent to the district attorney's office and prosecuted accordingly. So thank you very much.
Of course.
Okay. Any others?
No, that, that concludes your comments.
Thank you very much. This is receiving file. Please, next item.
Item 27 is county service area number one, zone number one. A public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charge for the Beach Hill Apartments project.
Okay. Good morning, members of the board. Don Pimentel with County Engineering. The Beach Hill Apartment Project is located on the northwest corner of Greenback Lane and Beach Avenue, and consists of the construction of a 29-unit, four-story, affordable, multifamily apartment complex and associated site improvements. This project was approved with a development plan review and major design review on August 9, 2023. In response to the project's conditions of approval required prior to the building permit issuance, the project proponents submitted an application requesting the initiation of this benefit category change process. Notices and protest ballots were mailed to the property owners on June 21, 2024. The project's parcel is currently located in the street and safety light non-residential category and is annually assessed $136.56. After the benefit category changes to the enhanced street and safety light non-residential and dedication of additional right-of-way, the increased annual service charge will be approximately $464.89, which will be collected only after acceptance of the newly-installed streetlight equipment for maintenance by the county. If there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider written and oral testimony, and objections and protests, and close the public hearing, then direct the board, direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballots.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public would like to address the board at this time on this item?
We do not have any comments.
Close the public hearing. Please tabulate the votes.
The legal owners are Sawad and Lee Buchangkul, parcel number 2610210019, and the site address is Beach Avenue, Sacramento, California 95662. And they are in favor of the benefit category change.
Okay. Will you please read into the record?
Thank you. In Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board received zero oral or written protests, which the board finds and determines to not constitute a majority protest. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of the benefit category, and 0% were in opposition of the change to the benefit category.
Thank you. All entertaining motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Hume, and second by Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Frost, you had your name up. Did you? Oh, okay. All right. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Item 28 is request to rescind a tax defaulted land sale of assessor's parcel number 22604200180000 and refund the full purchase price with interest.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. I'm Chad Rendy, Director of Finance for Sacramento County. On this item, we're asking you to rescind a tax sale of the parcel that Flo mentioned and authorize a refund of the purchase price. On February 29, we held the county's annual tax defaulted land sale. The sale included the subject parcel, which is a vacant parcel within the city of Sacramento. Prior to the sale, we're required to post notice at each parcel that we intend to sell if we have not had contact with the owner. On this property, we noticed there was a sign stating that it was property of the city of Sacramento. Our staff, in their due diligence process, contacted the city's real estate office and inquired as to the city's ownership of the parcel. The city shared with us that they were not the owner of the parcel. In our tax records, the parcel owner was Division Vist, who developed the adjacent subdivision. As a result, we moved forward with the tax sale of this parcel. It was purchased by Action Tree Low Income Housing Alliance for $60,400 and applicable taxes. On June 5, we were contacted by the buyer with a request to rescind our tax sale of the property, which requires your board's consideration today. The basis for the rescission was the prior owner, as part of their subdivision map, had made an irrevocable offer of dedication to the city to provide that parcel to them for use as a drainage basin. However, the city did not accept and record the dedication of the property, which would have established their ownership of the parcel. Thus, it continued to have taxes assessed, which went unpaid, ultimately leading to the tax sale. We understand that if we move forward to rescind the sale today, that the city will accept the dedication now and establish title to the property for its continued use. Thus, we're asking the board to move forward with the action today, as had we known this information previously, we would not have sold the parcel. And we have provided notice of this hearing to Action Tree Low Income Housing, the buyer, and the city of Sacramento, if they would choose to speak as part of the public comment. Thank you for consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So apparently, recordings are just as difficult as the Brown Act. Mr. Serna.
Thank you. Obviously, this is a fairly unusual circumstance. But that said, is there, what are the safeguards or protocols in place that would kind of keep this from happening again?
I review each of the parcels that are subject to the tax sale with our assistant tax collector and her staff. We are going to add legal counsel to our review process. I do think that we, we did do due diligence on this. However, with the city's response, we should have followed up deeper with the posted signage to inquire about the parcel and probably held off on the sale. So I think we've learned a lesson that in these unusual circumstances, we should inquire further into them. In my 10 years administering tax collection, this is the second time that I've, I've seen this type of transaction occur. But we do sell dozens of tax sales annually that are without issue. But in, in the situations that lead up to tax sale, normally there are complex circumstances with each parcel. And so leading up to the sale, we do work closely with our staff, make sure we follow the, the state's handbook on sales, and seek advice from our legal counsel as needed to try and avoid these situations. So we are planning to try and ensure our, our continued due diligence and make sure we pull in legal counsel into kind of that final pre-sale review to try and prevent this from occurring again.
Great. Thank you for the response, and that's good to hear.
Is there any member of the public?
We have no public comments.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not on this item.
Move the item.
We have a motion by Supervisor Serna, second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Next item, please.
Okay, for item 29, approve the attached resolution amending the fee structure for business licenses pursuant to the provisions of Title IV, Chapter 4.02 of the Sacramento County Code. Introduce the attached ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.01, Section 2.01.016 relating to fictitious business name statement fees. Introduce the attached ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 2.01, Section 2.01.016 ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 4.02, Section 4.02.030 relating to license fees. Waive full reading and continue the ordinances to August 20, 2024 for adoption.
All right. Well, good morning, Supervisors. Chad Rindi again, Finance Director. We have a brief PowerPoint for you to walk through our proposed business license fee amendments this morning. As an overview to that, business licensing fees were last updated in 2019. That was five years ago. Our fees are designed for cost recovery, so they're designed to recover the costs associated with issuing the license and compliance activities associated with our licenses. We do not set our fees to generate any surplus for our licensing division, and it is not a tax unlike some other jurisdictions that do charge a business operation or business license tax. Since 2019, our costs of both our staff as well as enforcement efforts that we fund have increased significantly with the inflation post-COVID-19 pandemic. As part of leading into the hearing before you today, we did perform some outreach to the business community. We sent a letter to each of our property business improvement districts in the unincorporated area, as well as each of our chambers of commerce working closely with our economic development department. And I believe some of their feedback has been received by you leading into this hearing. If the board supports these fees today, our proposal is that these would go into effect for October 1. And that's because via ordinance, we have to let at least 30 days pass after the approval of the fees before they are implemented. We're also recognizing that these fees are larger than they have been historically, given the inflationary environment that we're in. And part of that is the fact that we have not adjusted our fees in a five-year period. So I am asking the board to consider giving me authority in each of the next four fiscal years to make CPI adjustments for the CPI wage that we use for our staff, for clerical workers that reflects what our costs are typically based off of, so that we can have our fees keep pace with the cost of doing business and ensure hopefully we don't fall behind in the same amount. Our current license counts, our largest license, we have about 21,000 general business licenses, 400 tobacco retailers, about 4,000 special business licenses, and about 140 massage businesses, and 180 short-term rentals. Briefly walking through each of our license types of the increases, for our general business licenses, we intake the application, they go through a zoning review by our planning environmental review, they'll give a recommendation, looking if there's any code building or other violations out on the property before we move forward and approve the license. For home-based businesses, they don't have the additional reviews, and our fees do include any legal advice or legal advisement that we need. Our general license fees are increasing 29%. It is a three-year license. That differs from many of our counterparts, neighboring counties, and our larger cities, that have a one-year license for the general business license. And for home occupancy, that fee is going down. We did an updated time study and realized we're spending less time because we don't have the additional reviews on home occupancy businesses, so they're seeing a decrease. For our tobacco retailer licenses, we did do an updated time study, which broke out the amount of time and effort that we're spending on new license renewals versus new license renewals. And we do spend quite a bit more time with new licenses. And so, this does reflect an increase in cost predominantly for our new licenses over what our fees were previously. This program also pays for additional compliance activities outside of our office, which include visits from the sheriff's office for DK operations, and also check to make sure there's compliance with the board's flavored tobacco ban. The environmental management division does tobacco license inspections as well, as well as public health coordinates, youth purchase surveys to make sure that tobacco products aren't being sold to those that are underage. Our fees there are reflected on the board, about 40% increase for new licenses and about a 13% increase for renewals on tobacco. For our special business licenses, we're seeing very little increase. Special business licenses are for categories that are required by either state law or by our ordinances to have an additional license. The special license includes a background check for these types of businesses. So this does include that sheriff's time for doing the cost of fingerprinting, ensuring that their time, that their staff can approve or deny these licenses as well, and for any additional enforcement they need on this category of special licenses. The big difference here in our special licenses compared to our last fee renewal is we have broken out the category of massage. And by breaking out that category, it did keep our special business licenses relatively flat compared to our other license categories as to where they were about five years ago. The next category of licenses I want to walk you through is massage. And we did two things that are different in massage that are really leading to what I think are large and for some eye popping numbers here. One of the things is we did break it out of our special business licenses, and part of that is recognizing that massage has additional compliance activities that we do for them that we don't do for all other license types. Our business license inspectors inspect these businesses annually. The sheriff has adopted a practice of building up their operations to inspect these businesses annually as well. And we do additional education for these businesses to make sure that they're compliant, given the risks associated with massage businesses. And while we recognize that we have a lot of good businesses in this space, we do try to do our compliance in an equitable manner, which means that we are doing consistent compliance activities across the board. So it does mean that some of the good businesses are paying or will be paying additional amounts that are helping to weed out bad actors in the community. For massage providers, we do have an educational requirement to have 500 hours of education to be a massage provider. There's also a provider license in addition to the establishment. And then, for those that are state certified, they have a bit lower fee because the state does the background check for those providers that work in massage establishments. So we are seeing a very large increase reflecting our updated time study for the staff time that's involved, as well as in our budget. We are having additional costs that, from the sheriff's office, to do those annual inspections that have added to what we've included in the massage business licenses before you today. We also have a representative from the sheriff's office, if you want to ask questions at the end about their specific enforcement efforts in this space.
Okay. Supervisor Cerner?
Thanks. Actually, I'd like to hear from that representative now. I have a question.
I saw, I'll introduce, we've got Sergeant Gergich with the sheriff's office.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Sergeant. So a lot has been just mentioned about the sheriff's role, working with everyone that's in charge of issuing business licenses. And the increase is notable, but in terms of sheriff's activities, as it relates to that particular type of use, besides annual inspection, are there not surprise inspections?
Yes. So we do surprise inspections with both deputies and detectives. And we also are doing enforcement operations as well, where we send detectives and deputies undercover into the establishments themselves.
And you'll check for things like making sure there's no noise emitting device on the doors and that kind of thing?
Absolutely.
In addition to probably another, a number of other necessary inspection parameters. But, so where I'm going with this is, when that happens, is, does a clock start somewhere in the sheriff's office saying this is the amount of cost that we're incurring to ensure compliance?
So we actually have done a kind of a fee study of what it actually costs to run these operations. Just for the undercover operations alone, the sheriff's office has spent over $100,000 in the last six months on 44 different inspection places. That means we're having two teams of about 10 detectives and sergeants and so forth actually formulate the teams, go in, perform the basically undercover operation where we will get the massage, not me, by the way. I still leave very stiff. But the officers will go in, they'll receive the massage, and illicit act will either be negotiated or not negotiated. Based upon that, we will then enforce the revocation or different closing down of the actual business itself.
And that $100,000 for each six months, that's just the undercover work? That's just the surprise inspection?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And that goes into the fees of the detectives actually doing the workups for the actual business we're going to go into, the overtime costs, the actual revocation hearings, and so forth afterwards as well.
And in some instances, would there be an immediate booking?
Some, yes. Absolutely.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume, in one second. Just follow up on that. If there was more funding, would you do more inspections?
So we are trying to do as many inspections as business licensing is allowing us right now. Absolutely. If there was more funding, we'd be able to do more. Right now, the sheriff is shouldering it all. And, which is one of the great things about our sheriff, is he is willing to take, especially human trafficking, and massage parlors are part of that human trafficking aspect that we see. The state of California has a huge problem, but Sacramento is number four in the nation, depending on which study you are actually watching. That means that human trafficking works into all of those things. And we have seen multiple of those examples. As a matter of fact, of the 44 different places we've actually gone into, 65% of them have performed an illicit act on a detective or deputy as they've gone in. One is too much. 65% is absolutely astronomical. And our sheriff has dedicated himself and our department to fighting those things. And we're seeing ties all the way back to organized street crime and so forth. And so Sacramento is definitely one of the hotbeds for this.
And I appreciate that. And I appreciate the sheriff's emphasis on that. Anybody who thinks that this is a victimless crime is delusional. Supervisor Hume?
And agree with those comments completely. But as Chad mentioned, these fees are indiscriminate. And so, some of the perfectly legitimate, good operators are going to be paying more with the anticipation that there will be bad operators. What I want to know relative to the enforcement operations, what else is incurred, aside from obviously criminal conduct where there's an arrest and a booking, closure of the business, again, there's no revenue generated, are there fines, penalties, any civil actions taken?
And that is actually something we're working currently with business licensing, is increasing the closure of these businesses, because over the last couple of years, we've seen these businesses actually absolutely explode. We have a great number of these businesses all in, and I know you guys all gave the love fest to District 3 earlier, but he has the vast majority of the massage parlors in his jurisdiction.
How quick the luster wanes.
And I believe, I believe the most that any other supervisor has in their district is 16, and I believe that's Supervisor Cerner and Supervisor Kennedy. I believe you have four, and I believe Supervisor Frost has around eight. I can't exactly remember, but the rest are all in District 3. And so, one of the things that's popping up with these is the criminal aspect of these. And we're seeing, not only are we seeing complaints from family members, and that's granted, that's not our fault, but we are trying to address those issues, that there is a criminal aspect of what is actually happening, and marriages are getting ruined because of these massage parlors that are popping up everywhere.
And so, I appreciate all of that. And I know that in many cases, they're kind of like growhouses, and it's a game of whack-a-mole, and you're just going to beat this one down, and it's going to move over here and pop up again. And obviously, you know, they walk away from the current situation, and they file a new license application, and here they come right back again. So I'm asking, specific to fines or penalties or anything that has any revenue generation when there is an enforcement action taken.
And one thing I can say from the sheriff's side of things, what we're actually doing is communicating for the very first time with other agencies that are around us. Because what has happened notoriously before is they've gone from Sacramento to Placer. Once Placer shuts them down, they go to El Dorado. And once they shut down El Dorado, they go to Yolo. So we're actually communicating with those other jurisdictions because we're seeing, again, like you said, that whack-a-mole game of it, they move from here to here to here to here. And we've actually worked now closely with business licensing to make sure you guys know, or the business licensing knows where we're going and who we're going to go inspect, and if they come in the next day, which has happened multiple times, that they are not going to be able to change the name of the owner or change the business and so forth. And I'll let my partner say more about the fines and so forth.
We do have the ability, as part of the ordinance, to assess a $500 fine. However, a lot of times, we're considering whether to assess a fine. At the same time, we may be pursuing either suspension or revocation, depending on the severity of the license. And so, they also have the ability to appeal that fine. And so, they have the ability to drive up our appeal costs as well by doing that. So a lot of times, the focus has been on, if we have bad actors, instead of trying to extract a modest monetary amount out of them to deal with the operational issues at hand of pursuing the suspension or pursuing the revocation. And so, that's been our focus thus far. And certainly, as if a business is having a severe violation where they're going to close, there's a difficulty along the way to also collect on any fine that would be assessed. And so, that has been our focus historically in our approach.
And, so, go ahead. Well, and I appreciate that. I guess, in my view, I see it as an and, not an or, that it could be suspension, revocation, closure, and collections, lean, and potentially even involving the landlord, the property owner. Put their skin in the game. I just, and I'm only going down that road because it's kind of adverse to my worldview, but I just think it's not right that somebody who is an honest business person, trying to do an honest business, has to pay 268% more because our only option is to close it down and wait for them to open up someplace else. That just, that does not sit well with me. And I speak as one who has a sister, who is a massage therapist, who runs a legitimate business, who just had to move out of her space and into her home because her rent got raised. And so, these are real expenses for these businesses. And the fact that people are out there who are criminals, who are breaking the law, is making life harder for the rest of us. It just irks me. And we see it in more cases than just business licensing, but I'll stop there. Thank you.
Supervisor Cerner?
Yeah, just one quick follow-up. What about grants? Are there any grants that we pursue to help offset the cost of enforcement, cost of issuance, anything related to this?
There's no grants that I'm aware of that pay for the cost of business license administration. I'll defer to the sergeant if there's anything on the sheriff's side that they could pursue that would help to offset costs related to their enforcement activities.
Especially grants intended to address human trafficking.
So, thank you very much for your question, sir. There aren't any at this time. We've actually had the lieutenant governor's office and the governor's office actually do ride-alongs with the sheriff's office multiple times, and actually see what we're doing and how we're doing it, how the sheriff's office is being a little bit more innovative than we have, and we have our sister agencies that are actually doing it currently. Right now, I supervise a special investigations bureau, which our main task right now is human trafficking. That means we handle everything from Wad Avenue to Stockton Boulevard and our blades there in between. Two weeks, or excuse me, two months ago, we did an operation in North Sacramento. Again, that was on Wad Avenue. I'm not going to say whose district that was. But we arrested 56 individuals in six hours for human trafficking-related charges, both male, female, and over the internet as well. So we've talked to the governor's office, we've talked to the lieutenant governor's office about what we can do, because I have eight fantastic detectives and an intel analyst who are doing a fantastic job, and we're burning the candle at all ends. And one of our biggest problems right now is juveniles. Right now, we're getting roughly two to three juveniles every two weeks off the blades that are currently engaging in commercial sex work, being pimped out and so forth. So my team and our sheriff is incredibly dedicated to this, as I know all of you are as well. But massage parlors work directly into that. And unfortunately, right now, we're throwing fantastic money after trying to chase our tail on this situation. And our sheriff is, like I said, completely dedicated, but it starts with massage parlors, it then goes to the street. We have the juveniles, we have the pimps, and we're expensive. And we're burning it. So.
Thank you for the response.
My good friend from District 3.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank, yeah, this is quite the dubious distinction that I have in District 3. But appreciate the work, Nate, appreciate what you're doing. And I, and Chad, and I'm supportive of, of course, raising the fees to cover our costs of inspection. Clearly, it's incredibly important to conduct these inspections, especially in light of- everything you're talking about here, Sergeant. But it makes me, so one clarifying question I had for you, Chad, is explain to me, so an establishment obviously is getting a significant increase. A provider, establishments aren't also charged a fee based on the providers within that establishment as well? Is that accurate? Explain that interplay for me.
The establishment is paying the fee for the business itself to make sure that they're appropriately zoned, the owners are appropriately educated. But then the providers are also paying a fee because they're required to also have a license to be a massage provider as well. And so that's why you see on this list, there's an establishment license and there's also a provider fee. And so the establishment in our fee schedule is not necessarily paying that on behalf of the provider, but that would be depending on what their relationship is between them and their employees, whether they're willing to pay that on their behalf. Or, you know, some employees may work in multiple establishments where they maintain their own independent ability to work so that they can work in a variety of establishments.
And what if it's a provider that just, you know, is, goes out to private homes, they just work out of their home? Or maybe they don't even do any massages in their home, they just go to other people's homes? They're not also charged an establishment fee, are they? Just a provider fee? Okay.
They would just have, pay the provider fee. They would not have their own establishment fee if they're not owning the location where the massage is being performed.
I appreciate you explaining that. I do think it's worth exploring, you know, even though this really affects a very small population of our licensees in Sacramento County, it is worth exploring for the businesses maybe who have been inspected multiple years, have no violations. Is there, is there some way we could build in possibly a, you know, a waiver for one of these businesses every, every three years or something to lower the cost maybe because they don't need to be inspected again because they have demonstrated a history of compliance? You know, Nate, you and I, Sergeant, sorry, you and I had this discussion about some of the establishments that you go into that are run very, very well, very professional and everything else. So Supervisor Hume's sentiment is certainly not lost on me, but I think something like that would be worth, worth exploring. I'm not sure it requires us to slow down the action we take today, but I think it's worth exploring that for the future. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
I'm wondering if those massage therapists that are certified somehow have a less, if you have any data associated with those who are certified versus those who are not? Or is the certification required on everyone? And is there a way to have a certification that would come with, if they get that sort of higher certification and training, then they don't have as high of a fee?
Well, we do have for the massage therapists that are state certified, they do have a bit lower fee, but the real difference in cost there is just attributable to not having to pay for the secondary background check. And so that's the small reduction that they experience.
But I wonder if it would be, because human trafficking brings in someone who's maybe not knowledgeable or trained and who is really a victim, if a higher charge could be assessed for that type of person?
I'll defer to the sergeant on their experience for issues between, you know, the providers that are conducting these, whether they're certified or not.
So we've had multiple CAMTC providers actually conduct illicit massage, too. There's really, just because they have that level of training, doesn't mean they're still not going to, to perform those acts.
Got it. All right. Thanks.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this?
Actually, the presentation's not over, I think.
Oh, it's not?
I will finish it up quickly.
Okay. Sorry. We're beyond lunchtime here, Chad.
Short-term rentals, we are adjusting to have a separate business license there. The reason for it is their zoning permit today from Planning Environmental Review is a one-year license, so we're matching our license cycle to be a one-year license for short-term rentals as well in the county. And that also pays for our compliance agreement to search for short-term rentals that are unlicensed out in the unincorporated areas. Our license appeal fees, this is one of the fees that has not been updated in the longest period. This fee's actually not been updated since 2004. And so we are paying for the hearing officer when there is an appeal fee. This appeal fee is intended to pay for their time. It doesn't pay for my staff time. It doesn't pay for county council time. It doesn't pay for the sheriff's time if they're coming to testify at a hearing. But we're just intending to reset that rate because given the level of enforcement operations that are happening, we are paying quite a bit in hearing officers to allow them due process in their, their appeal hearings. And so that has a relatively sizable increase as well. I mean, that fee's broken up between tobacco and non-tobacco hearings. The last fee that I want to spend a lot of time on is we also issue fictitious business names for businesses that are doing a doing business as and need to identify themselves as such. It's a relatively small increase on our fictitious business license fees. And with that, happy to answer any questions the board has. We have the representative from the sheriff's office as well as a representative from my staff, depending on what questions you have.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Chad, for the presentation. So my question's for Mr. Villanueva. From a budgetary standpoint, if we were not to agree with the recommendation today to adjust fees upward to play catch-up, what happens in terms of the need to obviously continue to fund the activity? Where, in other words, what's the effect on the general fund or net county cost?
So the net county? So if, to maintain the level of service that we've come to know and appreciate, that additional funding would come out of the general fund. To what extent, I'm not sure.
No, I'm not asking for the numbers. I'm just, but the-
Yeah, the effect would be onto the general fund.
Okay. And then that would be one choice. The other choice would be we learn to live with inferior level of service, correct?
Correct. And that's why I started off by saying to maintain the current level of service. Thank you.
Are you done, Chad?
Yes.
Thank you. Sir, any public comment on this?
Yes, we have one public comment. I think it's Johnny's.
Welcome, Johnny's.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. I'm Johnny's Foster Downs, VP of Public Affairs for the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of our members and small businesses throughout the county, we do oppose the fee increases that are proposed to you today. While we appreciate the challenges that the county faces in maintaining these services provided by licensing, the proposed fee increases are drastic and costly, with the most common licenses increasing from 29% to, as we saw, a staggering 268%. We understand the goal is to adjust the fees periodically to reflect the costs that are incurred by the services that are provided. However, when the most, when the largest fees are increased to address and regulate the bad actors at the expense of our upstanding businesses, this is a concern as it penalizes our upstanding businesses to continue to operate. And these are businesses that are still trying to recover from the pandemic and still trying to operate in this challenging economy that we have. Also, this was just presented to the business community maybe about a month ago, so it does feel a bit rushed and it's set to go into effect in just two months. So this is going to have an immediate impact on our small businesses. So for these reasons, we do ask that the board does not move forward and look to explore some other solutions where it doesn't penalize our upstanding businesses and it doesn't disproportionately impact our small, independent and minority-owned businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny's. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank Johnny's. I appreciate your perspective, appreciate the conversation we've had. I mean, the vast majority of the fee increases here we're talking about are pretty negligible. I mean, for that general business license, it's a $52 increase over a three-year period. The only, the only ones that are more dramatically affected are, as we discussed at length, the massage establishments and some of the providers. But I think it is the responsible thing to do to charge a fee that captures the costs, certainly, of the inspections and enforcement. So I'm going to move approval of the item with direction to staff to explore the possible mechanism for a fee holiday or some kind of mechanism for, with the massage establishments. After two years of successful inspections with no issues, perhaps a reduced fee every, every, you know, third year or something. So Chad, and so is that okay if I incorporate that in that motion? Would that be enough as far as the motion? I don't know if it'll succeed, but with that kind of direction?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That would be my motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'll second the motion and we'll go to Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Chad, I appreciate the work that you're doing. I mean, you're still fairly new to the position and I think this is a part of your getting your house in order and kind of making up for lost time due to the pandemic and other reasons. You know, but generally speaking, I like to tell people that I view government as being a facilitator rather than a gatekeeper. I mean, that's just kind of my ideological worldview. And this, to me, seems like gatekeeping at its, at its finest. I can appreciate the point about cost recovery and I understand that there is an expense associated with this, but I also understand that these businesses, you know, they pay income taxes either themselves or their employees. They pay property taxes in many cases. They pay sales taxes in some instances. And so there is a lot of money coming into government already that this just seems like, when do we put the brakes on cost recovery and putting that back out? And so what I heard from Johnny's, and I am also in receipt of the letter from the Tri-Chambers, that they have not been consulted on what the material effect is to their membership and to the folks who are going to be impacted by this. So I'm not at a point to support this, even though I appreciate the motion, I appreciate that tweak. I think that's a good one of kind of, you know, once you've established a track record, we will not charge you any longer to cover the expenses of going after bad actors. But just in general, I think that there can be more of a reactive situation than a proactive situation when it comes to business licensing. You know, if, here it is, God bless you, go, you know, good luck to you. And if we receive complaints, then we're going to hammer you. And so that's just where I am. I won't be supporting the motion, but it's entirely because of my own personal worldview.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Serna.
Great. Thank you, Chair. I will be wholeheartedly supporting the motion. I think it's a good idea. I was actually mulling over, how do you, how do you somehow distinguish between those that follow the rules and those that don't and make that cost recovery, you know, commensurate with that behavior? So I think the addition is a good one. I just, I chimed in as soon as I heard the term fee holiday. And not that I'm disagreeing with the maker of the motion in any way, but let's not forget, there's been a fee holiday in place when it comes to fictitious business for, what, 20 years? 10 years? What was the last slide that you, Chad, that you had? And I know it's not a lot of money, but my point here is this, is we're having this hearing today is because we haven't been recovering our costs for the last five years. And so I think it's really important to remember that we're playing catch-up here. And I got to believe, based on the response earlier from Mr. Villanueva, that for the last five years, somewhere in the budget, we've been kind of subsidizing that, that cost. Correct me if I'm wrong, but again, I appreciate the chamber's perspective. I would be in a quandary if they weren't here saying what they're saying and writing the letters that they're, the emails that they're sending us. That's their job and it's completely understandable that that's their position. But I think it's really important before we vote and for everyone to understand that I take no joy in increasing the cost of doing business, but it's really important to remember the entirety of the context of where we are, including the fact that there's been, in effect, a fee holiday for years. So I'm, again, I'm very prepared to support the motion. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
Well, I guess it's clear where it's going to go. And I, you know, I understand and appreciate, Chad, the challenges that you and the sheriff department face relating to how do we, you know, manage, administrate this? And the, I also appreciate Johnny's, her comments relating to small businesses recovering from COVID. And I appreciate the dilemma for small businesses because, you know, it's like these fees are like a hidden tax, you know? It's just one more way to pass the cost on to the consumer. And at the end of the day, you know, the constituents wonder, you know, you have all this money, but the money never seems to get to me. It never gets to the roads. It never gets, you know, there's, it's like, small businesses represent 80% or more of our local jobs and our economy. And so adding that, I have an appreciation for what Supervisor Hume is saying relating to adding that burden on. And I, I don't, you know, I like Supervisor Desmond's idea about somehow, you know, rewarding good actors. And I know it's hard to determine, it's hard to vet all that. We're in a situation where we have such an administrative burden that the cost just keeps going up. And the ones who bear the cost are the citizens. And so I'm, I'm not going to support it. I know it's going to pass, though. So, but I just wanted to express my thoughts, why I'm not going to. And it's not that I don't want you to have resources, it's, it's more of a ideologic position. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. We have no more public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Then we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisors Frost and Hume recording a no vote.
Okay. I believe that takes us to a happy ending for that hearing. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Okay. Item 30 is a request for waiver of appeal fee for appeal of order after hearing to confirm report of abatement costs and resolution denying waiver of appeal fee by Mr. Ashen Sazagari for the 5633 44th Street property.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashen Sazagari. I'm the property owner. I've been-
Do we have a staff report on this first?
Yes.
Yes. Sir, we're going to have, have the staff make a presentation first and then you'll have an opportunity.
Okay. Sorry. I didn't know. Have a seat? Okay.
Yeah.
Understand.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Austin Deering and I'm a senior code enforcement officer representing the code enforcement division. I'm here to present and seek your approval on the resolution to deny the waiver of appeal fee request by Mr. Sazagari for the property located at 5633 44th Street in Sacramento County. Mr. Sazagari has submitted no supporting documentation with his request to justify a waiver of the fee. The board approved $700 appeal is intended to cover the costs of the county code enforcement and board staff to prepare for an appeal hearing. Waiver of this fee without supporting documentation will result in unfunded costs for the county to be paid out of the general fund. Therefore, I recommend denying the waiver of the appeal fee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Hearing, seeing none. Do we have public comment?
We do not have any public comments.
Would the appellant please come forward?
I have provided the county the information from my insurance company because years ago, back in 2022, I bought this property on tax foreclosure. And immediately after I drove by the property, there was prostitution, there was homelessness, it was a vacant house, it was just open. And as soon as I got the tax deed, I went out there, put the locks on it, tried to clean it up a little bit. And then a few weeks after, the house got burned. Somebody apparently took the gasoline that I left in the house to cut the lungs with to clean up the house, the front and the backyard, they torched the house. And then there was fire investigation for years and insurance investigation for years. And they told me not to touch the house at all. And during that time, I couldn't do anything. I couldn't go, you know, you know, try to secure the house, which I did secure the house. The insurance company hired a company to board up the house. But every once in a while, people were breaking in again, taking the boards off and going in, even though that the house was burned, you know, these, there's a lot of homelessness and prostitution in that area that they broke into the house. and prostitution in that area, that they broke into the house even though that the house was burned. And I had no control over that. The fire department told me not to touch it. The insurance company, State Farm, told me not to touch it. I have the letter here that the insurance company sent after, it was in August of 2023, they finally denied the claim. They said they're trying to blame it on me because I had a gas tank in the garage. And, you know, somebody broke in and went into the garage and took the same gas, and they basically torched the house. And I don't know what to say, but the insurance company denied the claim back in August of 2022. Immediately after that, in October, I pulled a permit to rehab the house with my own money. So right now, the house is completely gutted, and I'm, you know, I pulled two permits. I'm putting an ADU in the back and also rehabbing the old existing house. I have a letter from the insurance company showed that after two years of investigation, they finally denied the claim. Now, I'm hoping that you guys can help me out here because the city, the county is charging me a lot of fees on the top of all the other fees and inspection and permits that I paid to the county, they're charging me additional $4,000 because a few times they broke into the board, you know, the house was boarded after the fire. Somebody decided to break in and go in, and the city went out there and secured it. I don't live in the Sacramento County, but I live in the Bay Area. I have to drive all the way back and forth in order to do that. And during that time that they broke in, I was actually out of town, out of state. So I'm hoping today, I'm asking for the waiver of the fee because these are really unnecessary fees that they charged, and the penalties and other fees goes on the top of it, and it's just added on and on and on for past couple of years that I've been waiting for the insurance company to investigate and for the fire department to investigate.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume. Oh, okay. Are you done?
I'm almost done, and I can provide you the letter from the insurance company stating that they finally decided on August, August, let me put my glasses on, I can't even see the date, on August 29th of 2023, they denied it. And I pulled a permit on October 2023. So right now, it's, I'm in the middle of rehabbing this property and having it properly inspected, and hopefully I can rent it to Section 8 low-income housing in that area. I think it's in your district, District Number Two.
Supervisor Hume.
My question's for staff.
Okay. We're going to have staff come back up. You're going to have a seat.
May I suggest that you take a motion on the fee waiver request? Because you have not done that yet.
We still have a hearing going on.
No, I know, but there's two separate items, and the next item has not yet been called. So the proper order, I think, would be for you to make, consider whether or not you would like to.
I know, but we can't make that determination if we still have board questions of staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you call the item then, Flo?
Yes, Supervisor.
So I'm just curious, I want to have a, do we have, do we need to have an item called? Okay. One second.
Appeal of order after hearing to confirm report of abatement costs and resolution denying appeal and confirming report of enforcement action costs and lien assessment by Mr. Ashen Sazagari for 5633 44th Street.
Okay. I'm not sure what this is all about, but my questions have to do with the timeline and sort of, you know, the nature of the events at hand.
Of course.
So you, the property was determined to be open and available, VOA. Okay, vacant, open, and available. You notified the property owner that that was the case and that that's not tenable and needs to be corrected. Then you came back out and re-inspected and had not been done. Then you came out and re-inspected, had not been done. We now took it upon ourselves and did it. Then at some point, there was a breach in the window where apparently whatever we did did not secure it, or our contractor, you know, more specifically. There was a new breach into the property.
Right.
So I guess where I'm coming from is there's one thing to not secure the property, not respond to the initial order, to a point to where now we've incurred costs to do it for you. It's a completely different situation if other people are now undoing that work and continuing to cause a new nuisance. So can you, is there a way to sort of separate that out at all as far as from a cost recovery standpoint, or what we're looking to get relative to sort of the initial non-compliance versus the ongoing issues?
So if I can just back up one step, the first presentation I provided was for the appeal fee only. I did not give a staff report for this current issue.
Right.
But if you'd like to address the issue.
That's what's going on here.
Correct. So there's two separate agenda items. The first one was for the appeal fee, which I addressed.
So then I would make.
So counter to, you know, and I rarely, you know, conflict with county council, but I do think that we can't make the determination of the appeal fee until we really get to the jux, to the, what the heart of the matter is.
Well, I would say that you can, because if the appeal is successful, then he won't have to pay the appeal fee anyway. So that's why I think they were separated, because if the board decides that they do or do not want to waive the appeal fee.
Okay, then if the board would be so kind to indulge me as the district representative, I will take item 30, and I will move staff recommendation.
Sir.
Thank you for indulging me.
The motion carries with Supervisor Frost abstaining.
Now let's just move on to 31.
Should I read my staff report, or would you like me to address your questions first?
I apologize, I was all messed up. I was looking at item 31's staff report while we were hearing item 30. So I believe we should go through the proper motions as agendized.
All right, thank you, board members. So I'm here presenting this case to seek your approval on the resolution to deny the appeal and confirm the order after hearing to confirm report of abatement costs for the property located at 5633 44th Street in Sacramento, California. The details of the order after hearing to confirm report of abatement costs can be found in attachment two. The Code Enforcement Division, case number CODH2022-01147, has been thoroughly reviewed and requires your decisive action. The Sacramento County Code Enforcement Division made contact with the property owner, Mr. Sazagari, on December 8th, 2022, following report indicating that the dwelling was vacant, open, and accessible, presenting an imminent threat to public health and safety. Despite our efforts to contact Mr. Sazagari and provide opportunities for voluntary compliance, the property remained a serious hazard prompting necessary county abatement actions. Throughout the case, numerous inspections and enforcement measures were carried out. These actions including, included securing the property and monitoring to ensure continued compliance. The total costs, the total costs incurred for these activities amounted to $3,603.18, and the breakdown of each individual fee can be found in attachment four. The figure reflects the necessary steps taken to mitigate the dangers posed by the property and safeguard our community. On March 19th, 2024, a cost confirmation hearing was held, and the enforcement costs were confirmed as per the county code. Mr. Sazagari subsequently appealed this decision. His appeal does not challenge the necessity or the nature of the enforcement actions, but rather contests the fees charged. Our records and the outcome of the hearing clearly demonstrate that the cost assessed are justified and directly linked to the enforcement actions required to address the violations. The county expended considerable resources to ensure the safety and well-being of our community, and it is imperative that these costs be recovered as mandated by our regulations. Given the extensive process and the confirmed necessity of the actions taken, I recommend that the board approve the attached resolution to deny the appeal and uphold the confirmed abatement costs. This action will ensure that the costs are paid in full and uphold the integrity of our enforcement processes. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Hume.
I posed my question, so now we will be moved to an answer.
Okay. So your question was viewing the case as opposed to just viewing as the first violation where someone breached the property as it was not being inhabited. So the property was not being habitated, it was breached, a complaint was filed, an officer responded by contacting the property owner, telling him he had 24 hours to secure the property, or county would take action on behalf of the property owner. The property owner did not comply, and therefore a notice of, notice of violation was posted to the property, informing the property owner he had 72 hours to comply, or the county would take abatement actions on his behalf. That took place, and you're questioning now a second time, an inspection has occurred, and the officer went out and saw that the property had been breached. So transient opened up the property, took off a board off a window, entered the dwelling, and was occupying it illegally. So we have the first violation where the officer found the property to be open and accessible without being boarded up or anything. It was just illegal activity taking place at the property. The second time was when we went out routinely, as we do with these cases, to make sure that they are being maintained and they are not being breached. We saw it was breached, and then we had to re-secur it because the property owner had not taken any action to secure it on his own again. So our process is fluid. We continue to monitor these properties once they've been breached, and we had to board up the property ourselves for six months. We continually drive by the property and ensure that it is being maintained, because once we've given the property owner the opportunity to secure it themselves and they fail to do so, we now know that we have to take it upon ourselves to ensure community safety, that we maintain the property for them on their behalf.
Okay, and I appreciate all of that, so I'm not questioning why we do what we're doing. What I'm trying to parse out is how much was nonresponsiveness from the property owner versus sort of an ongoing issue? So it's one thing if he doesn't respond to the initial notice to say, you've got to secure your property. Once that property has been secured, either by him or by us, or by our contractor, if it's breached again, that's a new situation in my mind, unless there was, it was insufficiently secured to begin with, which in this case would have fallen on our contractor because we paid them to secure the property. Does that make sense?
Yes, so once the property was breached for the second time, we do make contact with the property owner with the director's determination, letting him know that we are going to be re-securing the property on his behalf if he does not secure that property. Us going out and seeing that second breach is not us taking an action that same day. We then go back and file paperwork to then do the process again. So it's the same process.
So it's the same process repeated anew, saying you, your property's been breached, you have 24 hours to secure it?
Correct.
That's what I wanted to know.
Correct.
Supervisor Serna.
Thanks, Chair. I was going to ask the same line of question in terms of, there's a new 24-hour period during which the property owner has the opportunity to respond, and that was the case for the second breach, correct?
Correct. Not a new notice of violation, but a director's determination is posted on the property, and the clock starts again, correct?
Very good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Can I respond to that question?
You may. Thank you, Chad, we're good. Yes, sir. This is, because this is a different item than we were speaking of earlier.
First of all, when the house got burned back in, I think it was in July 5th of 2022, yeah, that's when the fire happened at this house. On that same day, the insurance company hired the company to go out and board up the house. Now, that company was responsible, was supposed to be responsible for boarding up the house. Now, there was several time after that, there was people breaking in after the house was boarded. And that's when they came in, they charged me for having the house wide open. And I kept calling the company, asking them, would you please go out there and re-board it because the door is wide open? I did drove by the house, I did got their, you know, somebody called me from them, told me that your front, oh, the neighbors called me. I don't remember them calling me. One of the neighbors called me, the next-door neighbor called me, told me the house, the front door that was boarded, somebody pulled the board off and they went inside. And then I called the sheriff's office, and I don't remember talking to them directly and have any kind of communication in December because I was out of state in December of 2023. You know, I was sick and I was out of state. I don't remember talking to them and somebody, you know, telling me that I need to do this.
I think that we have a pretty good grasp of the situation. If you want to wrap up, that'd be great.
Yeah, and, you know, the fees, I'm asking you guys to help. I paid thousands of fees to the county to get a permit for this house. And recently, the main problem I resolved it finally by putting a six-foot fence all the way around the perimeter of the front yard. Otherwise, you know, this thing is going to happen, you know, over and over again, you know, even though if there's door locked, they're going to break in to it anyways if the house is vacant. And now I prevented by putting a six-foot fence.
Okay.
And cameras at the house.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. You can be seated. All right, no other questions from the board? We have no other public comment?
No public comment.
All right. I will just say that, first of all, you talk about the responsibility of the insurance company. No, sir, the responsibility is on you. You know, when you have, you own property in a community, you have a responsibility to that community. No, sir, you've already had your say. You have a responsibility to that community regardless of where you live. If you have a house in a neighborhood in Sacramento County, particularly a low-income neighborhood that's trying to pull itself up, you have a heightened responsibility as a landowner. It's not the responsibility of the insurance company. And, you know, we followed the due process all along the way, as far as I can see it. So I will be moving staff recommendation.
Can I make one more comment?
We have a motion and a second. Supervisor Frost? No.
I just wanted to make a suggestion for what it's worth, that if you're investing in and out of state or out of town, it's often beneficial to have a property manager who lives in that area. You pay them monthly, it's not really a high fee who can watch over that property for you. I mean, I just wanted to share that with you in case you have other investments, because things happen, and if you're not there, someone has to manage it.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Sir, no. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, item 32 is the public hearing on abandonment request for levy portion of Old Walnut Grove Thornton Road in the Delta Community and reservation of public utility and private easements for continued access under Streets and Highway Code, Section 8320, and the environmental determination is a categorical exemption.
Okay, good afternoon, Chairman Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Jody Hashagami Conchas, I'm from county engineering. The item before you is a request to abandon the levy portion of the right-of-way of Old Walnut Grove Thornton Road and to reserve the underlying public utility and private easements. Is there, Florence, is it possible that I have access to the overhead projector?
Yeah. Yeah, if you just set that there.
Which way?
There you go.
Oh, sorry.
You had it right. There you go. Perfect.
As you can see, there are two properties abiding the portion of Old Walnut Grove Thornton Road that is subject to this abandonment request. For one of those properties, APN 1560020064, identified as the Marius Family Trust, primary access is currently via Old Walnut Grove Thornton Road. For the other property, APN 156021001, identified as John B. Marius, primary access is via the new alignment of Walnut Grove Thornton Road, and the old alignment provides only secondary access. Approval of the abandonment would relinquish the right-of-way along the levy portion of Old Walnut Grove Thornton Road. Additionally, the existing public utility and private easements would be reserved and accepted from the vacation. Letters are on file from the utility purveyors, from the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, and Departments of Planning, Transportation, and Water Resources, indicating that these departments have reviewed and do not object to the abandonment. Therefore, staff recommends that the board recognize the exempt status of the abandonment and adopt the attached resolution. This concludes my presentation, but if you have questions, myself or representatives from the Department of Transportation are available. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Any public comment?
No comments.
Mr. Hume.
Sure, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to extend my thanks to the representative from RD 563, who, you know, this whole thing started with the floods back from the winter of '23 and the emergency berm that they put on the top of their levy, which was in part encro-
berm that they put on the top of their levy, which was in part encroaching upon the, the right-of-way of the, the county roadway there. Since the Juicy's burned, there's not a lot of public use of that road anymore. And so I just want to thank DOT staff. We were going to demand that they remove their berm and, or charge them for us to remove it, and, and we were able to come to an amicable agreement wherein we stayed that action until this decision was made. And so I appreciate the work that's been done by staff, I appreciate staff's recommendation, and I happily make the motion to abandon the right-of-way. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Hume, second by Supervisor Serna. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 33 are your nominations. And you are continuing to August 20th, the Faroe Cemetery District, continuing to September 10th, Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Faroe Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Rio Linda Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to September 24th, the American River Parkway Advisory Committee, County Service Area 4B, Slough House Wilton Casanis, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, First 5 Sacramento Commission, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, and the Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first item today is the Adult and Aging Commission.
Continue to September 10th.
Thank you, Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please nominate Craig Hendricks.
Okay. And Children's Coalition.
Nominate Jose Gores and continue the, the remainder to August 20th.
Thank you, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to September 24th.
And Supervisor Hume?
Also continue to September 24th.
Thank you, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council.
Continue to August 20th.
Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. We'll start with Supervisor Kennedy.
Nominate Carissa Cinco and waive the process.
I'm going to give that second to Mr. Serna. Unanimous vote. And then we'll start with Supervisor Desmond.
Please nominate Lauren Herbalin and waive the process.
Second.
Unanimous vote. And then we'll go to Supervisor Frost.
Please nominate Natanya Karat and waive the process.
Second.
Unanimous vote. Thank you, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Supervisor Desmond.
Please continue to September 10th.
Thank you, Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to September 24.
And then last but not least is the Sacramento County Youth Commission. Supervisor Frost.
I nominate Kushi Shukla.
Do you want to waive the process?
Sure.
Second.
If I can.
Okay, unanimous vote. Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
That takes us to item 34, County Executive Comments.
Thank you, Supervisor. I, just two quick comments. One, I would like to personally invite you and your families. We've partnered with FC Republic, our local soccer club, and we were, we are hosting a Sacramento Republic FC Sacramento County Employee Night. So all family and friends of Sacramento County employees can come, that's going to be on Saturday, September 14th. It's, they will be facing the Phoenix Rising. This partnership that we've built with FC Republic included discount, includes discounted group tickets, a photo of all the folks that take, take part in this from Sacramento County on the, on the field, an exclusive gift from the Sacramento Republic FC group. So it is on September 14th, it's a Saturday night, I'm hoping the weather will cool down by then. But again, I'd like to personally invite you to take advantage of these discounted group tickets. We've secured at least two sections. This is the first time we've ever done this, so we either secured too many or too little, we'll, we'll know soon, soon enough. The second thing, you know.
Before you, before you move on, how, how do we do that?
There was a, a link sent to county employees and we, we'll resend out the link as it gets closer, includes a QR code. And we'll definitely share that, not sharing it here because we, we need to.
Sure.
Keep it to county employees and their families.
Right.
So, but again, I wanted to personally invite each and every one of you and your families. The other thing is, you know, Hang Nguyen came up and gave a great presentation on the election system, and that's just one of our many outstanding, outstanding department heads. But one of the other outstanding departments we have is animal care. Just to bring to your attention, we have record-breaking adoption rates for the animal care. In July of 2024, we were able to have adoptions of 875 live release for those folks. Compared to July of last year, that was, that number was 367. So you can kind of see how, how significant that number is. And when you talk to Annette Bedsworth, the director over there, she's quick to identify it's not necessarily her, but it's her staff, her teams, her volunteers, and the community and some of the community fundraising that happens, that happens for that particular organization. So thank you for allowing Hang to present, but also recognize we have fantastic department heads in addition to this one with this outstanding, record-breaking month of July for live release.
That's awesome, great.
I think Supervisor Serna?
Yeah, I was, I was chimed in to go third here, but yeah, I guess.
What, have I lost control of the meeting?
If you'll indulge me, Mr. Chair. Just, just on the, on the subject of kind of third-party fundraising that assists, in this case with animal care and control, we had the first annual Pups Cup Golf Tournament on Friday, last Friday, at William Land Golf Course, otherwise known as Land Park Country Club. And we had Kings representatives out there, Kings players. We had representatives from animal care out there with, with dogs. They were out taking photos with, with the animals. And I don't have the final numbers yet, but I'm told that, and this, by the way, I failed to mention, is being sponsored by Mojo's, which is a local tap, tap room and restaurant just down the street at 15th and I. And they have a particular affection for helping out our four-legged furry friends. And in fact, Mojo's, the name Mojo is the owner's dog. And so they came, they approached me months ago, hey, we'd like to do something to raise funds for, for animal care in the county. And I suggested we just kind of have a direct link to our agency. And so I'm told that they raised somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000 net for, for animal care. So, congrats to everyone involved and thanks, David, for teeing that up for me.
Great. And thank you, thank you, David, for being there as well.
Thank you for both your support. I know Supervisor Kennedy was there and Supervisor Serna played a great role in that. And those funds go to a nonprofit that helps provide life-saving surgeries to many of the animals.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume. Thank you, Chair. This is technically under Supervisor comments, but I think we're kind of morphing into that anyway. So I, I would just like to say that we had another fatality in the American River at El Manto. And so for anybody watching, all county staff that pay attention, just to remind that whether you're on the river, boating, rafting, or wading or swimming, just respect the, the river. It's, it's much deeper, faster, and colder than you think it is. And there are life jackets that are available to be loaned to you for free, so there's really no reason that anyone should not make it out of that water alive. It's, it's tempting on those hot days, but please respect that that river is, is not your, your final place. And then the last thing I'd like to say is I've, I've reached kind of an untenable situation. I'm at my wit's end, and so I'm bringing it up in, in open session to, to shine a light on it. I've had received several complaints, and in fact, they come in frequently and in multiple parts of my district regarding unlicensed food vendors. And unfortunately, our EMD, I believe, is not equipped to adequately address that situation from their current staffing policies and, and whatever else. But, you know, we had a, an item earlier on business license fees, and I just think it's, it's patently unfair and inequitable that we have brick and mortar establishments, we have nonprofits that want to set up, you know, a booth at a, at a community event, and they're held to a certain standard when it comes to business licensing, when it comes to environmental health inspections. And yet we have these scoff laws that know if they set up after 5:00 PM, then county health has gone home for the day and they're not going to get inspected and they're not going to be held to any standards. And so, you know, one solution would be, let's cancel all inspections for everybody, then it's fair. But I don't think that's a really good idea in the interest of public health. So we've got to figure out a way that we can somehow do more than just hope that people do the right thing. Hope is not a strategy in this instance, and I, I'm asking for help to somehow move the, the needle on this and get to a situation where we can start protecting these communities and protecting the people who are going about things the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. We'll look into that.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond has comments and then an adjournment.
And, and thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to just echo the comments of Supervisor Hume. This is becoming a bigger and bigger problem in the district that I represent, especially in areas where you see restaurants closing down that have been there for decades and, and now you have vendors set up. And these aren't just, this isn't just someone with a, you know, a small cart, this is a full mobile kitchen coming and just setting up. And we need to have a better way to ensure first and foremost, the, the health and safety of the people who, who patronize these restaurants. Because I, I mean, as I know, there's a, you know, there's, there's legislation at the state level that, that allows vendors, but it does not mean that we cannot still regulate them. So I, I share the, the frustration of Supervisor Hume and hope we can do something about this. One thing I also want to bring up is I have Supervisor Hume and I have talked to our county council about bringing an ordinance to the board that mirrors or largely mirrors the governor's executive order relating to clearing encampments. And so, Mr. Chair, I hope at some point we maybe get that on the agenda, but I think that should be part of a larger discussion to talk about the, the implications of our current ordinances, both the Parkway ordinance, critical infrastructure ordinance, how those are impacted by the recent Supreme Court case. And also I think it's a, it's a good time to have a discussion about where we are with both our capacity that we're bringing online and our enforcement efforts and how those are being coordinated. You know, it's been a while since I think we've had that discussion, and I think it would be important, especially as we're, you know, talking about the safe state communities and, and another large one coming online eventually. And it's, it's certainly not lost on me when, when the governor issues this executive order, but they also, he also says to the locals, counties, and cities that, look, you have the tools, you have the resources. I mean, we need more time to stand up a lot of these things, but it's important to have this discussion, kind of the enforcement and the services side, how they're working together and what more we could be doing. So I hope at some point we could have a discussion about that here at the board, so thank you.
I will work with you and the county executives, put that together.
Thank you. And do you mind if I go right into the AM? And thank you for indulging me, I know we're here a little later than we expected. Mercedes Ruth McCulloch, a longtime resident of California and Sacramento County, passed away on June 23rd at the age of 88. Born on August 28th, 1935 in Miami, Ruth is survived by her children Janet, Barbara, and David, her stepson Thomas, Gay the Third, as well as her cherished, cherished grandchildren, Brittany, Samuel, and Charlotte, and great-grandchild Ocean. Ruth was an active member of her community, particularly within her family. As a dedicated stay-at-home mother for 26 years, she took on roles such as a Cub Scout den mother, Girl Scout troop leader, and an Engage Parent Teacher Association member. Her days were filled with ferrying her children to various activities like ballet, baseball, swimming, and music lessons. Ruth moved to California at the age of 17, befriended her neighbor, and befriended her neighbor Tom Gray. This relationship blossomed into a 43-year marriage. Tom and Ruth raised their children in Santa Monica, Redding, Sacramento, and Mill Valley. Tom, Thomas Gray preceded Ruth in death in 1995. Broadening her focus from her family to community affairs, Ruth was elected chair of the California Parks, or the Carmichael Parks and Recreation District Advisory Board. As her children neared adulthood, Ruth pursued her aspirations to make a professional impact on society. In her early 40s, she returned to school and earned a degree in political science from Sacramento State University. Following stints at several nonprofits, Ruth dedicated the latter part of her career as a secretary for multiple California state senators. Upon retirement, she engaged in various volunteer roles, starting as a castle worker and later with Meals on Wheels. An advocate for animal rights and environmental conservation, Ruth adored her cats, considering them among the most beloved beings in her life. Ruth will be greatly missed and forever remembered by many. And, Mr. Chair, I ask that we adjourn in memory today of Mercedes Ruth McCulloch.
And we will do such. We're adjourned.